Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to do it.
Giving us lip and giving us a hard time.
He's got a three-foot, uh, he's got three forty's and he could lay the foundation.
That's a lot of.
Yeah, but Doug goes to talk to him and he's gonna put it up.
Ladies, are we recording? Throw it away? That's why I don't like having a lot of my stuff given to me in paper format. I want it electronically.
Me too, because I have a big stack of stuff. I need to bring it back and have them shred it.
Or recycle them.
Yeah, usually recycle it.
For two years, anything away, because I was a freak too.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, my wife, I'd be like, oh, she's like, what are you doing? I was like freaking out. So I, you know that, the way you go drop your boxes off? They have that.
Yeah.
You're running for a long evening?
Yeah.
I could.
Well, I have the attitude that if it's not in electronic format, I really don't want to see it. Unless it's a permit.
Yeah. No, I can pull it up here. I just, for some reason, when I click to download the whole PDF, it's just not loving me right now.
I think we need to uninstall the program and reinstall it. Because mine's weird.
It's more paper.
I wouldn't spend it. You have to turn it back in.
And Lou, we're ready whenever you are, ma'am. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Inglewood City Council Regular Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have you please prepare for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we just ask you to be with us this evening, that you would guide and direct our deliberations. And Father, I just ask that those who are here to speak tonight, that you would cause us to listen to them and that they would be heard. We just give this time to you and thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Members Olson?
Here and Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Garantine?
Here.
Gillett?
Present.
Martinez?
Present.
Russell?
Present.
Yates?
Present.
And Mayor Jefferson?
Here and also Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Five, Consideration of Minutes of Previous Session. I would entertain a motion at this time.
May I approve the minutes for seven November twenty sixteen?
Second. Thank you. Got a motion in a second. Any amendments or comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The records show seven ayes.
Excellent. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Recognition of Scheduled Public Comment. We do have several speakers this evening. Our first is Coen Dickerson, Inglewood resident, will address council regarding communications. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
Good evening. My name is Coen Dickerson, twenty-eight thirty-five South Pennsylvania Street, Inglewood, Colorado. Communications and transparency in the city have improved, but that was a very low bar to begin with. The more information I tried to access, the more I realized that transparency in the city is not transparent at all. Last meeting, I asked why I could not access EHA's minutes and meetings materials as I can all the other boards and commissions. I am still asking. I have had to make several core requests and still don't have the minutes for January through March and September and October. I cannot get to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and twenty fifteen without great cost and effort. Why is this so difficult? I am sure other citizens would like to know the info I have sought, and it should be available on the website, but it is not. In one of the few monthly meetings I was able to read from the few I have received from Mr. Gillett, Mr. Gillett is quoted as saying that all the EHA meetings, minutes, and meeting materials have been delivered to the city and they are on the website somewhere. I cannot find them. Where are they and why are they not easily accessible to everyone, even the council? Why is this still such a mess? Then there are licensing procedures which are so deficient and confused that SCAFLA businesses can apply for one type of business and get licensed for that and then open with an entirely different business model. Shut I-Bake down. I-Bake Studio four-twenty as a business, operating business, does not fit in this city. Allowing Mr. Comer to continue to ignore the clear directions of council to shut it down administratively sets a dangerous precedent, that licensing does not matter, truth does not matter, that enforcement is nil and anyone can do whatever they want. What happened in Denver has no effect on our rules or plans. The recent initiative regarding public consumption of weed is a pilot program and requires neighborhood approval. Let I-Bake Studio four-twenty go to Denver and see if anyone there will let them have a weed consumption club. In addition, medical marijuana shops have been allowed to operate out of compliance for years because police who are charged with enforcement are not enforcing the state requirements because they are a low priority. Now these shops, one of which has never operated and could not because they never established a cultivation facility under their name as required, are set to convert to rec and the city will be unable to enforce the stricter rules on rec-weed shops. Staff does not know what the rules are. Mr. Comer sure does not know. He has put us in several big messes and cost the city big bucks because of his lack of competence in legal matters. For instance, the lawsuit against the city for the Title VII residency issues and the way he wrote and/or approved the ballot measures that will confuse and hinder enforcement and the welfare of citizens. And then there is the budget and the looming fiscal cliff. Before Mr. Comer was given the hundred-and-sixty-five percent raise, whether deserved or not, the budget for legal was over a million. Eight-hundred thousand was appropriated. Where did the rest go? When the budget was supposed to include SIRSAP payments, which have been for the last four years over four-hundred thousand per year, one year was over seven-hundred thousand. Revenues have to exceed or at least equal expenditures or there is no balance. The budget does not balance, even with including what is labeled savings or reserves. And last but not least, a few examples I have time to address. Taxpayer dollars, mine included, paid for a consultant to evaluate the city administration and a ninety-five-page report was compiled showing lots of problems between staff and management. At least, that's how the rumor goes. Why can I not see and view this? Why is this not public? Where is it? If there are so many problems, we citizens need to know about it. Where is the transparency here? Why is this a secret? That anonymous employee is outed? Why? My tax dollars paid for this. It isn't confidential. It is mine to review. Why is almost everything in the city in such a mess? It is not transparent if the information is hidden or buried in a massive irrelevant data and specious opinion and obfuscation. Making these few examples public or taking care of them and solving the problem will be a belated start towards transparency and clear communications.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions from council for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Scott Kelly from Colorado Lighting, addressing council regarding the wastewater treatment plant lighting project. Good evening, Mr. Kelly.
Hello, and thank you. Scott Kelly, Colorado Lighting, five-two-seven-five Sanford Circle East, Cherry Hills Village, Colorado. I came here today to address the comments that were made at the last council meeting because there were several omissions and factual inaccuracies that adversely affect Colorado Lighting's credibility, and we want to make sure that the City of Inglewood has the correct facts. It was stated that Colorado Lighting had designed a system that was outdated and the competition had brought forth a wireless system that was sixty thousand dollars less and better. Like most things in life, though, you get what you pay for. We are quite familiar with that system and have worked with that system extensively in the past. That system isn't right for the City of Inglewood wastewater treatment plant campus, and I would like to justify why we designed the system we did for the City of Inglewood. Wireless. It sounds so state-of-the-art and attractive when you hear it, but did you guys know that almost all federal facilities won't let you use a wireless system in them? This is because a hardwired system is always more secure and more robust than a wireless system. The system we proposed, Inlight, has a wireless option, but in a critical facility like the wastewater treatment plant, we believe that security and robustness are important attributes. A wireless system is easier for hackers to infiltrate and can be a Trojan horse for them to get into not only your lighting system, but other systems. Additionally, we designed this lighting system with maintenance savings as a primary goal. Over a ten-year period, it is a good bet that you will have less maintenance headaches with a hardwired system than a wireless system. Your admin building is all drop ceiling and the system we proposed is all low-voltage plug-and-play. In the admin building, it will be easy to install and it's easier to commission than the wireless system. So for a little bit of extra labor, you get much more robust and secure system. The main cost difference in the Inlight system we specified in the competition's wireless system is Inlight has far more capabilities. That wireless system has no front-end dashboard capability. It doesn't have a lumen management system. It can't be incorporated into exterior lights. It can't be pushed up to a building automation system to be networked into other building control systems. And it can't do demand response. The Inlight system we proposed can be scaled with all of these capabilities. This is the current standard of lighting controls. In addition, the City of Inglewood has already done two phases of lighting projects representing over half the lights on the campus with acuity brands and the Inlight controls. There are benefits to standardization. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have multiple control systems to have to learn and manage in one campus. In addition, the City of Inglewood wastewater treatment plant has already, I'm sorry, the Inlight system we specified has been standardized into buildings at CU Boulder, CU Denver, all thirteen buildings of the new VA Hospital, Fort Collins, the National Renewable, and the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. We measure fixture efficiency in lumens per watts. That's how much light a fixture puts out per watts it consumes. The competition's fixture is ninety-one lumens per watt, not very good by today's standard. Acuity's is a hundred-and-eleven lumens per watt, or twenty-two percent better. The system that the competition proposed in the original bid is not the right fit for the campus like the wastewater treatment plant, Inlight is. It was also stated that in the walkthrough that the competition had discussed proposing an alternate control system, but that should be irrelevant because no other contractors were present, and the city put out an addendum stating that you could only propose an alternate control system on two line items, not the hundred-and-forty-three line items they chose to propose in equivalent. They chose to propose the alternate system not because it was better or even equivalent, but because it was less expensive. I would encourage your engineers to research both technologies to decide which is a better fit for the wastewater treatment plant campus. I would also like to address the comments made regarding Colorado Lighting designing and bidding on the installation. We have never hid from this fact, and it was one of the first things we told Eric when we met with him. We are proud of the fact that we can provide high-level engineering services and installations. It makes us unique. It also makes us efficient and allows us to offer our customers cost savings. We would hope that the City of Inglewood would embrace small businesses that can bring these kinds of efficiencies and cost savings to the table. I would also like to address the comments that if the City of Inglewood considers my arguments, that they will open the door for other contractors to do the same. I believe that if a business thinks it is the best option for you, that they should be able to fight for your business. Which brings me to my last point. The City of Inglewood put into the bid documents the language of the city reserves the right to accept the bid deemed most advantageous to the city. Any award made in response to this invitation to bid will be made to the responsible entity whose offer will technically be most advantageous to the city. It goes on to say more, but the gist of it is the city put this language into its contract documents as a safeguard. It's so you don't have to look at one number in the bid to make a decision. It's so you can analyze the bid tabulation sheet, the meat and potatoes of the bid, plus all the sporting documents that we've spent a great deal of time putting together to make an educated decision on which bid is the most advantageous to the city. It was stated that I had asked for a third bid. I think the council video and the letter I emailed all of you on October twenty-sixth will show that I never wanted this to go out for a third bid. I think it would be a travesty to the bid process for multiple reasons, which I spelled out in that email. I simply wanted the city to use the language in its bid documents as a basis to reevaluate the bids, given all the facts regarding this unusual bid situation, and decide which company represents the best value to the city, then send out a short letter to each company explaining your decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Let me see if council has any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking this evening, Mr. Kelly. Our next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding concerns about the Allen Water Filter Plant third study. Good evening, Mrs. Bailey.
Good evening. Tonight, we continue to wait for the, while we continue to wait for the two thousand and ten's sludge report, I'm asking City Council to vote against approving Keck and Brennan's third costly, a hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar study. I will go through each study topic included in this study to demonstrate why. One, review of Inglewood's residuals management process. Inglewood's on-paper residuals management process is state-approved and detailed reports on our residuals management process already exists and are available through the city and to the water plant. So why are you paying a third party to duplicate already existing available reports? Is it because it will look good on the report? Two, review alternative residual management processes. Isn't that what you already pay Tom Brennan to do? So why are you also paying a third party to review alternative residuals management processes, simply because it will look good on the report? Three, review Inglewood's compliance with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, that I will refer to as state. The state regulates, among other things, what level of radioactive elements in the sludge can be disposed of within a municipal landfill. The state can demand a RESRAD risk assessment be performed if sludge reports show high levels of radioactive elements in the sludge, which the state demanded Inglewood do in two thousand and twelve. However, as soon as Inglewood ceased to request to dispose in a municipal landfill after being denied, the state had no authority to require Inglewood to run a RESRAD on behalf of Inglewood's own employees. So Inglewood remained in compliance with the state even though Inglewood did not do the two thousand and twelve state-requested RESRAD risk assessment. Tragically, following the state denial, Inglewood then also failed to inform the state, who would have stopped Inglewood, that Inglewood intended to ignore Inglewood's own current state-approved residuals management process requiring yearly disposal and instead stockpile the sludge, starting with two thousand and eleven, rather than pay the high cost of disposing at the hazardous and radioactive landfill. It was only after a citizen complaint in two thousand and sixteen informing the state after five years of stockpiling that Inglewood was finally cited by the state for their failure to comply with Inglewood's own on-paper residual management process. A record of only one citation in two thousand and sixteen from the state certainly will look good on your public report, but hidden will be the fact of Inglewood's negligent absence of any due concern for their own employees' safety and that of immediate neighbors in failing to assess the onsite radiation dose risk exposure from the high concentrations of radioactive elements in that sludge. And also hidden will be the fact that Inglewood displayed further disregard for employee safety as well as intentional deceit to the state in their choice to stockpile the sludge rather than honor their own state-approved residual management process agreement for yearly disposal. Four, as for the risk assessment itself, as outlined in this third over a hundred thousand dollar study, as I stated in more detail last City Council meeting, Brennan and Keck's third study states only that they will do a risk assessment study based on all available historical years using a RESRAD or some other unidentified tool. This strategy allows for leeway to select only the first historical bad year, two thousand and nine, and then go backwards and plug in all available historical good years, which will generate a skewed, false, low-dose risk result Inglewood will be happy to report to the public. For all the above reasons, again, I ask you to vote no tonight on this expensive, redundant, and easily publicly misleading study, and please, instead, simply demand that Inglewood management provide the two thousand and ten sludge report to our group so that a RESRAD onsite worker risk assessment for two thousand and nine, ten, and eleven sludge can finally be completed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. See if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and talking. Our next speaker is Idem A. Nickel, Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding the comprehensive plan. Good evening, Mrs. Nickel.
Good evening, Mayor Jefferson, council, and Mr. Keck is not here tonight, so Mr. Murphy. My name is Idem A. Nickel, and I'm with the Inglewood, I'm with, my address is forty-seven forty South Le Pen. I started to say I'm with the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society. We, the Inglewood Historic Preservation, excuse me, we, the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, are sincerely grateful to you council members and our city manager, Mr. Keck, for considering and working toward making it possible for our city to establish an Inglewood Historic Preservation Commission in this comprehensive plan. For the first time in our city's history, in well over a century, our Inglewood history will be recognized and appreciated. We also appreciate all the effort and hard work your staff has put forth and continues to do for our citizens. You all will be making history. Thank you. History tells its story and has enormous power in bringing the past before our eyes, as if it were the present. To establish a history museum for our city would be a dream come true. Our legacy is an interconnection across time with the need for those who have come before us and a responsibility for those who come after us. Any city who saves their heritage is a healthy community. In this comprehensive plan, I am so appreciative for all the areas involved in our city that citizens have the opportunity to take part in and enjoy for years to come. I appreciate the art and culture for what it brings to our city, which is good, and there has been much said about the arts and culture, such as the Museum of Outdoor Arts. However, there have been huge amounts of funding for this museum over many years, and funding for saving our Inglewood heritage or a museum for our citizens has not been forthcoming through past council and past city management. They did not invest in Inglewood's unique history. So when I see statements in the comprehensive plan that outlines a direction that recognizes Inglewood's history and preserves those elements that make Inglewood a great place and promote actions to help a city thrive and strengthen in the coming years, warms my heart. When I see in the comprehensive plan objectives such as encourage and support efforts to create and fund incentive programs for the preservation and restoration of historical significant residential buildings, along with objectives such as to encourage educational efforts to improve civic pride in Inglewood's historic heritage and artistic historical elements in new developments, emphasize enhancements, brings a smile to our face. Outstanding objectives in the comprehensive plan are to encourage our Inglewood history in neighborhoods and would add character and establish neighborhood identity to make our city great again in historic terms. The Inglewood Historic Preservation Commission will not be part of the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society. They will be separate and they will have their own board members and activities. The city appoints the commission board members, this is just for information for our audience. The Inglewood Historic Preservation Society came about after a city council meeting concerning the sale of our historic Inglewood train depot on March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. A small group of eight people formed the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society in order to try and save our historic train depot. We received our five-oh-one-C three in two months and was unheard of. We had our first historic lecture program in May of two twelve, just two months after we formed the society. Our first lecture, Meet Me at the Motel, was a great program concerning the eighty-some-oh motels along the Santa Fe Corridor before it became I-25. Most people do not know of the many historic treasures that have come out of this little city called Inglewood and the history surrounding us. We welcome you to our activity, we welcome all of you to our activities and membership. We have a monthly lecture program, which is always historic, and a news letter along with our website. We have fundraisers such as a Victorian, high tea in one of Inglewood's beautiful Victorian homes and a beautiful gala, and other activities with the chamber. We are very appreciative of the present city council and city manager, Mr. Keck, for the respect they have shown us and their willingness to save our city history. We thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See if the council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for talking. Our next speaker is Doug Cohn, Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This whole thing with the comprehensive plan seems like it's kind of been a marathon. And I got to thinking about that. A marathon is twenty-six miles. Next month, you'll have been working on this for twenty-six weeks. So I think you've done a marathon here. And I'm pleased with quite a bit of the stuff that you guys have chosen to put into the plans. I just wanted to say thank you for that. And then I have a question. Have any of you guys ever heard of Dearborn Brass? Dearborn Plastic is another name. Thirty-two-eleven South Platte River Drive. The Dearborn Company started in the eighteen nineties making brass plumbing fittings, and they opened up the Inglewood manufacturing facility. I haven't, I don't know the details of this yet. I'm guessing probably in the fifties or sixties. Then in nineteen seventy-six, the guys figured out you can use plastic for plumbing pipes. They don't have to be brass. And the Dearborn Company just down the street here participated in that invention. They started with styrene plastic, and that's what you make plastic model airplanes and cars out of, not good at all for plumbing pipes. Then they went to something called polybutylene, not good either, just has some difficulties. Then they went to PVC and ABS. Those guys were in the forefront of the whole invention of the plastic plumbing industry. I just thought it was kind of cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Let me see if there's any questions for you tonight. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, that is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have some speakers this evening. Our first is David Chesky, here to speak about sludge. And on deck is Brian Brockhousen. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. David Chesky, four-nine-zero, West Grand Avenue. Hello, everyone. It's been a couple of weeks since you've seen me. Did you miss me? I'm sure. Well, I'm back here to again ask for the two thousand and ten sludge report. As you just heard from Kathleen, we still don't have it. Several weeks have gone by. Those are now turning into months. Still hasn't been produced. Employees from the Allen Water Treatment Plant, neighbors in the vicinity are still suffering. People are still dying from cancer, and you're still sitting there, just staring at us. So I guess we're just going to have to keep coming back and staring at you. So I guess I'll probably see you in about two weeks from now, same time, same place. Is there a date, everyone? All right, very good. See you then.
Is that it? Thank you, sir. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Brian Brockhousen, speaking on the topic of gratefulness. And on deck, we have Susan Walker. Good evening, Mr. Brockhousen.
Good evening. Brian Brockhousen, forty-eight-ten South Fox, and I hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving this week. So, of course, this time of year, always looking for reasons to be grateful, and I've always been grateful of Inglewood. Tonight, my little story is about one particular restaurant in Inglewood that been here for- Tonight, my little story is about one particular restaurant in Inglewood that been here forever. It's well-known. I love it. So a year ago, last October, a friend of mine, a registered citizen, perled to a motel in Inglewood up on Broadway. He's out looking for work. This restaurant decided to give him a chance, and they hired him. You know what? Because they stepped out, because they were willing to help this man, he's successful today. He was at that restaurant for a couple of months. Got a job in his career choice, which is, you know, doing construction. But it's still—it couldn't have been easy for them to make that decision, to hire this man, to give him a shot, to give him a chance. But today is awesome. He's great. He's very successful. So we stopped in that restaurant last night, and we had dinner. It was so cool because the owner came up. I mean, she had a smile, but it went all the way around her head. She was just so happy to see him. And that was just a wonderful opportunity to do that and to be a part of that last night and to know that all it takes is one. It takes one person to say, you know what? I'm going to give you a shot. And it can change a lot. This man is growing. He's—he'll be over at my house on Thanksgiving. Doesn't have a lot of family, but you know what? He's moved up out of the hotel. He's got his own apartment. Is, you know, managed to get himself a car, and just is growing. He's doing what we all do on a day-to-day basis. And it's because it took that one person to say, yeah, we care enough to give you that shot. So that's all I got tonight. I was grateful for that. I'm grateful for this one business in Inglewood, as I'm grateful for a lot of businesses in Inglewood. I'm grateful for this city. I hope you guys are, too. I know you are. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking. Our next speaker is Susan Walker, here to speak about Title VII. And on deck is Carolyn Turner. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Susan Walker. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I decided about three o'clock this afternoon to wax eloquent with a poem tonight, so this is in honor of those that have been victimized and with hope for the restoration of them and the person who has offended. It's entitled "Farewell to Title VII." For all the tender hearts abused, to all who have been so misused, how can we help you to derive life's best to both survive and thrive? Stranger danger lurking near is not really what you have to fear. It's those you know and love each day that likely put you in harm's way. The person living beyond the fence convicted of a sex offense is supervised closely by the law and endures long treatment for every flaw. If we push offenders underground, it's likely that they will be found returning to behaviors past. Their restoration may not last. With a place to call their own, a stable and inviting home, a job, and loved ones to lend a hand, the wayward have a place to stand. The truth is not found on TV. Ah, yes, for victims to be free, offenders' healing must be found as neighborhoods share solid ground. Thank you. I'll leave a copy of this with the clerk for each of you.
Appreciate that. See if council has any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for that this evening. Our next speaker is Carolyn Turner. And on deck is Robert Elstrom.
Good evening.
Good evening. I apologize. I'd like to give you each a sheet of paper. Can I do that?
If you would distribute it to the clerk, she'll disseminate it here for us.
But now, I want to kind of go—
Yeah. If you give it to her now, she'll disseminate it right now. Thank you.
All right. My name is Carolyn Turner, and I'm chairman of Advocates for Change. We're a group who would like to not get rid of sex offender laws, but just see that they are just. And as in Isaiah ten-one says, woe to those that make bad law. I know that you were probably rushed into the residency restrictions with not as much knowledge as you would like to have or was even available at the time. But now it's been proven over and over and over by city after city that it just doesn't work. It's bad law, and it needs to be fixed. So, again, we're asking you to consider overturning this—I don't know. It's not a law. It's a—whatever you call it. And these paper—this paper just shows that not very many people are—the stranger danger is just nil. Just for instance, two years ago, Colorado came out with their report, and they had about two people—or, I mean, two point some seven people who recidivated sexually. And that was five people, when they put it in numbers instead of percentage. Of those five people, three got felonies for not registering. One got a felony for an internet rule. And then the other one was not—it was—I don't know. She didn't know exactly what it was. But—so I just think that the residency laws is going the wrong direction. It's forcing people to be homeless, and certainly, I don't think you or anybody wants to cause people to be homeless. I mean, the cry is to help them, but this law makes people homeless. That's not what you're after, I do not believe. So I'm asking you to look at the facts, how few people who get out of prison or are arrested recidivate. They're not the dangerous ones. It's the people sitting in church with you. It's the people—I don't know. It goes on in the home most normally. So stranger danger is pretty much—doesn't evolve. And it does not help residency laws. They do not help. So we're just asking that you would get rid of it. Period. I will say that Kansas has something, that they have safety zones. I don't know if you've looked into that, where, like, a circle around a school, just within the fence of the school or something, a person who has a sex fence can't go. But it isn't this huge thing. It's just some safety laws. So my time is up, but I appreciate the fact that you're looking at this, and we'll consider that it is not good law.
Thank you, ma'am. See if council has any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for speaking this evening. Our final unscheduled public comment is Robert Elstrom, speaking about bystanders and boiled frogs. Good evening, Mr. Elstrom.
Robert Elstrom, forty-eight-twenty South Fox Street. If you get a flat tire on a lonely road, the next passerby will likely stop to help you. If you get a flat tire on I-25 during rush hour, thousands of people will pass you by, each of them believing that someone else will help you. This is called the bystander effect. So the question is, how many bystanders does it take before none of them will stop Inglewood from interfering with the state's plan to support peaceful registered citizens in order to keep them from becoming sex offenders? Apparently, that number is seven. One of you needs to pull over and help the city of Inglewood fix the flat tire called Title VII, Chapter Three. The seven of you have been driving past without helping for four months now. Four months. Councilmember Gillett, you locked your doors and rolled up your windows on this issue long before I showed up here on August first. Will you now respect the deeper truths of this matter and worry about the political expediency of it later? Mayor Jefferson, I ask you, please, stop using the words pending litigation as a convenient dodge. I firmly believe you know this legislation to be deeply flawed. Step beyond your mayoral role as mediator and appeaser, and take the initiative in your equally or even more important role as an elected council member. Councilmember Olson, put your PhD in leadership to good use and take a leadership role in this issue. Your understanding of social psychology and your ability to digest research data put you in an ideal position to take a stand and help. Councilmembers Yates or Martinez, does either of you have the integrity to do what is needed to move Inglewood from the Dark Ages into the twenty-first century? Councilmembers Russell and Berentine tried to help Inglewood on August fifteenth by proposing a moratorium. The other five of you told them to get back in the car, lock the doors, and drive on. An oft-quoted parable states that if you try to throw a frog into boiling water, it will jump out and save its life. But if you put that same frog into a nice, cool pot of water and bring it to a boil, it will sit there until it dies. Biologically incorrect, but fitting. Gary Sears frightened the 2006 city council into jumping out of a boiling pot of Hannibal Lecter horror stories. Thus came to be Title VII, Chapter Three. In 2016, the seven of you sat in this steadily heating pot of political water for a third of a year. Jump! If the citizens of Inglewood view the entire council as a pot of dead boiled frogs, they will likely try to find seven live frogs to put back in the pot next election. Rid the city of this dangerous legislation. Do not be a bystander. Be the person who takes a stand. It only takes one of you with the integrity to pull over and three others with the integrity to help you for the city of Inglewood to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. See if council has any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking this evening.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to council response to public comment. Would anybody like to kick us off? Seeing nobody, I will start a response here. I would like to thank everyone who came down and spoke, you know, regarding the, you know, Title VII issues. We do have a study session scheduled for the twenty-eighth, and hopefully, we can move the ball forward on that issue. For the folks who came and spoke, you know, regarding the Allen Water Plant issue, I do appreciate your continued diligence looking for this 2010 sludge report. I will ask Acting City Manager, Mr. Murphy, if he has any update regarding the 2010 missing sludge report.
Sir, at this time, we do not have any update. It's the same update that we've gotten last week and the week before, in that they're still looking through their—their broken computers, I guess, to try and find it. I again want to stress that if we had it, we'd give it—to them. We don't have that document, and so we want it just as much as the public does.
Thank you, sir. You know, City Manager Keck is out this evening. You know, I will try to have some additional conversations with him regarding additional strategies to get this 2010 sludge report. It has been admittedly a very long time, and, you know, I will be working with the public to uncover this 2010 report so we can move on with other issues. You know, thank you to Mr. Cohn and Idem A., who came and spoke regarding the comp plan, including some reference to historic preservation as well as a historic preservation commission. I do think that it's important for us to really provide opportunities to celebrate our unique history, and I think that's one of the reasons that makes Inglewood a really uniquely desirable place to be, not just to live, but also to do business. To Mr. Kelly from Colorado Lighting, I appreciate his comments and clarification coming down this evening. Mr. Murphy, do we have any update on that bid process? Where we're at on that?
Yes, sir. So I do believe that they are starting to look at that bid process, but they're—what I've asked them to do even this morning was to make sure that they have the entirety of all the concerns that were brought up to you all from the public, including both firms that came to your council meeting in this next bid process, making sure that they follow it to the T. And so I know that they're looking at getting that started, but they want to assure that we go by industry standard as well as by our policies and procedures.
Thank you. Ms. Dickerson, thank you for coming and speaking. You spoke about a whole host of issues. You know, the housing authority transparency is a bit of a concern for us as well. We need to make sure that they're getting their minutes on their website, and we'll work with that. They do have a separate board as well as an executive director. You know, as far as the recent Cora request for the document requested—the ninety-five-page document you referenced, my understanding is there was some sensitive HR-related issues there, and that's why that request was not provided to you. Hopefully, some of these other issues we can address through this evening. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Berentine.
Coen, I'll start with you. You did bring up quite a few issues. I will challenge the mayor only in that his comment that they have a separate board is—leads into the narrative that we don't have authority over them, and that is not accurate. They are a body politic by their design with condemnation, eminent domain powers, police powers, similar to the urban renewal authority, and we do have control over them. And we should have them come in line so that they are like all of our other boards in transparent and provide information available to the public in what they're doing. So I'm sure we'll have more conversation on that, but to simply dismiss that they're separate from us and we have no authority as if we appoint that board. They are our citizens in this community. Needs to be looked at a little bit more, and it's a little bit dismissive. So I agree with you. The information needs to be out there and needs to be available. The—I would like, if you would please provide the city council with the Cora request that you did on the issue of the ninety-five-page report and the video that was brought up and that letters—anonymous letter provided to council by the concerned Inglewood employees, that you said you were denied that report. I'd like to have council provided with the reasoning that you were denied that request. And if you could provide the request, so I can see what you were requesting, I would appreciate that. And then we'll go from there, I guess. For Scott Kelly with Colorado Lighting and the wastewater plant lighting project, the continued presentations done by the two companies just continue to bring concern about what our process is and how we're doing things. This council asks for a third bid to be put out, and I'm a little confused why, like so many citizen issues, they feel the need to come and address this council on that process. So if we could find out what the process is, what's going on, how we're handling this, and how we're moving forward. It was one of the things that had gotten brought up before was the bidding process, especially for the wastewater treatment plant, and a concern of Littleton's that Littleton has voiced in the joint meeting. So if we could make sure that we're given that process and see if we could stop this, that would be—that would be great. To Kathleen Bailey and Dave, I greatly appreciate that you're still coming. I echo Mayor Jefferson's concern that the only report that's missing is the one that you've been asking for, that this has been a long time, that we should not lose reports, that we should have the information available and get this taken care of. It is well-spoken, Ms. Bailey, that what you asked for and have asked for from the beginning is not what we're going to end up trying to do. And it is concerning. In the meetings that happened on August fifteenth, it was made very clear by this council, the majority of this council, that they wanted to go ahead and make sure that we had an independent investigation and that the community was going to be at least considered in some of the questions and issues that were going on in that, and what we're doing is another testing. And you've made that clear time and time again. That's not what you wanted, not what you wanted before, and we still seem to be headed in a road that isn't going to answer your questions, and it is going to, as Dave pointed out, keep you with a date at seven o'clock to come and see us. And I hope we can get this resolved. It is starting to look—people are very concerned that the only report that you're asking for is the one we don't have. So we need to get this resolved. And Idem A., I'm glad we created a historic preservation board, too. I think it would be—it's going to provide a good commentary for the community to have some input on things. I think that your comments for the comp plan, as a lot of people have brought up some concerns as we see public meetings happen, that there might be a little bit of a disconnect with something part of the comp plan and what the community views that that's going on. So the more information we can get, probably the better offer going to be. And the comment that got made about the—from Robert Elstrom about pending litigation, it is an unusual situation for a community of council to agree that there is a serious problem with an ordinance that they have and also pursue things in court. I understand that puts everybody in a very odd position, but it is what this council has decided to do. has decided to do, so I guess we remain in our odd position of trying to go through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, this is Consent Agenda Items. I would entertain a motion on these items.
May I move, we approve Consent Agenda Item Nine A12, B12, and C12 and 3?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councilmember Russell?
I would like to pull out 9B1.
Okay. That is Council Bill 45. That is on second reading, so I'll suggest that go under 11B6.
Move as amended.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Berentine?
I would like to pull 9A2.
Council Bill 47. That's an ordinance on first reading. I'll suggest that'll go under 11A1.
Move as amended.
Thank you. Now we'll be voting as amended with those two items removed for the consent agenda. Further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, this is Public Hearing Items. A public hearing regarding the proposed Englewood Forward Comprehensive Plan Update.
Should we move, we open a public hearing?
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. The record shows seven ayes.
I'll turn it over to our staff source. Mr. Stitt?
My name is Harold Stitt, Senior Planner in the Department of Community Development, and I'm here this evening to present to you the Englewood Forward 2016 Comprehensive Plan. And before I begin, I want to hand to the clerk affidavit of publication in the Englewood Herald and also in our city website. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's been a long road to get to this evening in terms of our comprehensive plan. We began this process a number of years ago to look at the existing comprehensive plan and see how our community has changed in the intervening 10 years. One of the things that is really important to consider is why are we doing this? Why is this document necessary? Well, for one thing, change is relentless. Change always occurs. It's inevitable, and if we choose to manage that change rather than to be managed by that change, we can come up with some very creative and very successful ways of helping Englewood move forward. The Englewood Forward 2016 Comprehensive Plan is a result of over two years of effort to craft a document that establishes a vision for the community in terms of land use and serves as the policy document containing direction for the development of Englewood over the next 10 to 20 years. It's a guide that offers private development community guidance in investing and building in appropriate scaled projects in appropriate locations within the community. That is the essence of comprehensive planning, change management. The Englewood Forward Plan is based on a number of other documents over the last 10 or so years. There have been, of course, the 2003 Comprehensive Plan Roadmap Englewood, but a number of plans in the intervening years that have helped build momentum for development in Englewood. The plan itself is based on four parts: the importance of Englewood, Englewood's framework, envisioning the plan, and realizing the plan, and I'll go through each of these sections individually. The first section, let me back up. The plan itself was based on a set of goals. In fact, this project was part of a multi-tiered approach to comprehensive planning. There were two other projects that were going on under the umbrella of Englewood Forward: a light rail corridor study and a pedestrian bike plan process. But for those two other programs as well as the comprehensive plan, there were four sets of goals for the projects: strengthen the existing goals and objectives that were found in the original comprehensive plan from 2002; develop strategies that would help us to engage the public and also to improve development within the community; also to engage the community in evaluating the types of strategies that would be appropriate to meet development pressures that are on the city so that that development is appropriate for each individual neighborhood in the city; and then finally, develop an implementation program that's based on community support and is adopted with strategies that are effective. The plan itself is composed of a number of themes, six to be precise: live, work, move, shop, learn, and play. These themes, as they're known, are actually another way of addressing the traditional comprehensive plan elements, that would be residential, industrial, transportation, commercial and business, educational and institutional uses, and recreation. Under the live theme, the idea is that diverse housing stock is important in this community. We have an aging housing stock, and we have a number of different groups moving into Englewood that are desirous of various types of living situations. We have small homes. We're interested in large homes as well as apartments being developed in Englewood. The work theme has to do more with educating a workforce. Having an educated workforce in this community means that we're very more apt to attract businesses that pay living wages in this community. And in fact, one of the things that's important is baby boomers and educated millennials are now looking at communities like Englewood to call home. And as those folks move into the city, we end up with a more educated population, and that's very attractive to this workforce, makes it very attractive for businesses to locate in Englewood. The move component is basically transportation, and as you know, transportation emphasis has been switching away from personal vehicles more to mass transit since we have a massive investment of public transportation infrastructure here in Englewood with the light rail corridor. The light rail corridor also provides an opportunity for focused redevelopment around the stations that are in Englewood that will provide for residents, not just in those areas, but throughout the community. The shop component, or shop theme, is again the commercial or the business component, and one of the things that we're finding is that communities are experiencing a loss in retailing because of the internet. And there are ways to combat that. One of the ways is to have more small businesses in the community, and that's one thing that our economic development program has been working on for a number of years. That will now be coupled with an employment-based approach to economic development. The learn component is one of the more interesting because it includes not just the city of Englewood, but the school district and other educational facilities and institutions within the community. And the idea there is that having a better educational system, not just for students in kindergarten through grade 12, but beyond that, is very valuable. It's something that employers look for, and it's coupled well with the workforce, a highly educated workforce. That was a major point in the work theme. Play is something that we do very well here in Englewood. We have a very good recreation system. It also means that our quality of life is very good here in Englewood, but there are additional things that we can do to improve the recreation system and join in with other recreation organizations throughout the metro area. Part two of the plan is called envisioning the plan, and that is important because what we've done with this plan is to create 13 neighborhood areas within the city to focus our comprehensive planning efforts. Now, these areas are not hard and fast-lined areas. Most of them are defined by a primary focus, be it a park or a school, and we've looked at each of those areas. We've had a number of public meetings, neighborhood meetings, to get input from the residents in those areas as well as the businesses that may work in those areas. And by defining those areas, we get a better idea of the differences and the similarities within each of those minute areas within the city. The neighborhood areas, I'm going to show you a map. It may not be very easy to see for the community here, but this is the northern half of the city, and it shows the number of neighborhoods. We have Baker Park, the South Platte Neighborhood, Cushing Park, Bates Logan Park, Romans Park, the Medical District, downtown and Englewood Station area. And then the southern part of the community, we have the Maddox-Jason Park area, South Broadway Heights, Duncan Park, the Bellevue-Brookridge area, and then Centennial Park area. So those are the 13 neighborhoods that we focused on. The key policies that we came up with, though, in those areas are important to focus on because those help sharpen how we will implement the comprehensive plan in each of those 13 neighborhoods. The assessment is done to look at how those individual neighborhoods have similarities with other neighborhoods and how they're different, and based on those differences and similarities, we can craft specific implementation strategies for each of those areas. And for instance, I'm going to go through one area, the downtown Englewood Station area. Now, on this map, you can see that there are different colors, and the idea is that we look at the red, for instance, are areas of catalytic change. There are pressures in the downtown area for redevelopment, and we hope to be able to capture that redevelopment and contain it in areas where it does the most good and where it's most appropriate. The orange areas, which are below to the south of the downtown area and to the east, are those areas where there may be some pressure for development, but it would have to be very targeted, and we wouldn't be careful about how that development were to occur in those areas. The other areas that do not have any color on them are areas that we believe are stable, and there should be very little change, and if there is change, it has to be vetted through a process to make sure it's compatible with the neighborhoods. The neighborhood policies are an important part of this particular plan because what they do is they outline how a particular neighborhood will be managed through these strategies. Now, for instance, we have eight strategies for the downtown area. So for instance, the first one is a balanced vehicular movement with opportunities for bike and pedestrian mobility. So we want to look at how do people get in and out of Englewood, around the downtown and through the downtown, and make sure that we have appropriate infrastructure to accommodate that. The downtown strategy number two is to extend bike facilities east along Floyd Avenue and then implement pedestrian zone amenities. And that's important because we have more and more people that are riding bikes and walking within the community, not only commuters themselves, but also in neighborhoods. The next set of policies or strategies that we've identified for the downtown area are to support corridors as key commuter routes. So we have Broadway as a key commuter route. There's a fair amount of commuter traffic on Dartmouth and 285 and Santa Fe, and we want to make sure that that traffic stays there and doesn't filter in through the neighborhoods. But we also want to make sure that we have appropriate infrastructure to maintain that traffic flow. The DT number four, or Downtown Strategy Number Four, is to work with partnership with hotel and small event facilities, which is something that has been an issue in Englewood for a number of years. We've tried to attract some hotel flags to develop in Englewood, and up to this point have not been successful, but we think this plan will help demonstrate that we're serious about redevelopment within the city if it's appropriate for our community and in appropriate Finally, the last three for the downtown area are Consider Daylighting and Restoring the Natural State of Little Dry Creek. That was something that was brought up time and time again by the community. There are some financial implications to that. It would be a very expensive project, but it would be an amenity that I think the city could be proud of, provided that technology is available as well as funding to do that. Investing in parks and open space, especially improvements at Miller Field. There's been much discussion about how that area might redevelop in terms of police facility, but there may be opportunities to increase parking recreation activities in that area as well. And then finally, Enhance the US 285 as a community gateway. It's a major cross-town traffic carrier for the metro area, and we have an opportunity to capture some of that traffic for the city of Englewood. And so those are development-centered strategies for the downtown area. Each of the 13 neighborhoods has a similar set of strategies based on the particular uniqueness of those neighborhoods. And the strategies then bridge to actual implementation, and we have identified, for instance, in the downtown area, additional strategies based on specific types of activity. So for instance, I realize this is difficult to see, but let me just read one of these strategies for community centers, which is what we consider the downtown area. Strategy 5.1: Develop a strategic planning framework for a reimagined and reoriented downtown, including the Medical District, that identifies supported land uses, building heights and massing, new road connections, streetscape, gathering areas, catalytic development, code changes, and parking requirements in areas. And on the right-hand side of that chart lists various objectives and goals that are supportive of that from the live, work, shop, move area of the themes. And likewise, in each of the neighborhood areas, we have a series of strategies specific to residential, commercial, and industrial uses that, if implemented, will move Englewood forward. Finally, the last part of the plan is the monitoring aspect of the plan, and the purpose for the monitoring aspect is we have embarked on a strategy of indicators. We have a series of indicators that our consultants have put together that we will monitor on a yearly basis, and we will check back in a year's time after the plan is approved, and we'll evaluate those indicators to see how well we're doing. And it may cause us to readjust the plan as necessary. There's a select group for the yearly review. We have a much larger group of indicators that we will review on a five-year basis because it takes time for some of those trends to make themselves present. So every five years, we'll do a major review of the comprehensive plan, and at each of those years, either the five-year or the one-year reviews may cause the plan to be modified to appreciate or take advantage of changes within the community. And with that, I would like to finally add my thanks to council for the attention and detail that they have added to this comprehensive plan, and I would be remiss not to thank the consultants that helped prepare this: Logan Simpson Design, Bruce Meehan in particular, and Christina Couture. Also, from Progressive Urban Management, Brad Siegel and Erica Heller, who were very instrumental in putting the indicators reports together for us. And last but not least, the staff of the Department of Community Development, without which we probably wouldn't be here tonight: Brad Power, Nancy Fenton, Julie Bailey, Brooke Bell, Audra Kirk, Jeremy Lott, John Voeberl, who did yeoman's work in helping prepare this document, Darren Hollingsworth. All have been very supportive of this process. Their input to this process has been amazing, and I thank them for their efforts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, I'll suggest we move on with the public hearing roster.
I do have a letter that was submitted late tonight of support from the Tri-County Health Department that I would like to enter into the record.
And with that, I'll call... And with that, I'll call our first speaker, if nothing else, from you, sir. Our first speaker of the evening is Koween Dickerson. If you could come forward and get sworn in and then state your name and address for the record.
My name is Koween Dickerson. I live at 2835 South Pennsylvania Street, Anglerwood, Colorado. Okay, that was a lot worse than I expected it to be. I had read over 200 comprehensive plans for my occupation in my previous incarnation as an employee. I have never read or heard a worse one. Just because it costs a lot does not justify passing it. Wasted money is just that. Do not pass this defective comprehensive plan. It does not reflect the character of Anglerwood nor the will of the citizens. Most of all, it is not the city's business to inflict upon the citizens what amounts to an all-powerful government controlling every aspect of a citizen's life. Plus, it gives way too much power to the Development Department, planning and zoning, and developers in general. Holding this public hearing at this point is rather disingenuous. A lot of people are gone for the holidays and haven't had time to reflect upon this and what damage it could do. And I would suggest you schedule another one for after the first of the year before acting upon this. A comprehensive plan, as required by the state constitution, is a legal land use document. The proposed one is a cookie-cutter, somewhat socialist plan designed by questionable, inexperienced people and never customized to the city of Anglerwood. The group that promoted this to the city on a contract basis said it was not a legal document. If you pass it, we will be stuck with this legal, non-legal, garbage, costly document that will give all power to developers and staff and will destroy the unique character and tax base of Anglerwood. Work, live, play, learn is a very specious framework that is not the business of any government to decide, and it is redundant. For example, the recent community meeting on the redevelopment of one of the few remaining industrial zoned areas revealed a number of problems. The first thing they did was promote how their project was authorized by the new comp plan and fit into it. The second thing noted was that their proposed 40-foot project protected the adjacent R1 neighborhood because there was no limit currently on height of industrial housing. There is so much wrong with this plan, I can't even begin to address them all in this. But one thing was noted, he said, "Well, we're going to have an educated workforce." Well, we've already eliminated that by all the Section 8 housing that's gone up, and there's not room for much more without taking down a lot of the residential. It's just a waste.
Thank you. If you could stick around for just a second, see if council has any questions for you. I do have one. Ms. Dickerson, thank you for testifying this evening. I'm sorry, I've got a question for you. Sorry if I was a little unclear. Thank you for testifying this evening, and my question for you is, you know, given you see a lot of flaws with the comprehensive plan, are you suggesting or advocating for a redo or restart? Or are you suggesting that a comprehensive plan in its nature is probably not a good idea for us?
Well, you are required to have a comprehensive plan by state law, as far as I know, and I don't think that home rule eliminates that from you, but it is a legal document, and this is not designed like a legal land use document. It is designed for some socialist control over the lives of people. You have no right to determine that we have to have a diversified housing stock. Just that particular meeting that I was referring to on 1400 Oxford, there were a few other things I wanted to address about that. The fact is, and I think I-
Yeah, my apologies. That is not my question. I appreciate that you want to share some more, but I think your time is up unless council members would like to ask further questions. Councilmember Berentone?
You've piqued my curiosity. Now I want to know what it was.
Okay. Besides the fact that they said that this was authorized by the comp plan that hasn't been voted on or passed yet, and they insisted that they were providing a transitional buffer, it is neither a transition nor a buffer. It's going to be over 40 feet tall. It's going to be very expensive. There's no attention given to parking, or traffic flow, or anything else. That area is already so congested that nobody knows what to do about it, and there's nothing built into their plan. They are just going to rezone, then they're going to buy it with a rezoning, and then they're going to build this horrendous structure and add to the congestion in the neighborhood and wipe out an industrial area that we need for commercial and other things. The real issue is, if it's going to protect, then we need to change the zoning for industrial so they can't build a six-story or a 10-story building there. We need to limit it to, say, 20, uh, two stories, and not the density that they're planning. They're putting seven houses in next door, the same developer, on 1.4 acres, and they're two-story, and they're causing problems with, already with traffic. And then they're going to do 52 units plus 12 commercial industrial units on the ground floor, and they have no parking to account for visitors or whatever.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and testifying this evening, ma'am. Our next speaker is Patricia Ross, and on deck is Bill Clayton. Again, if you'll just get sworn in and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dr. Patricia Ross. I live at 3361 West Monmouth Avenue in Anglerwood, and I've come to this whole comp plan late, but it's been a very interesting thing to learn about, about land use, about political agendas. And as I watched this presentation, I kept asking myself, who benefits really from this comp plan? I get that there was an issue of, this has been going on for two years. I know this must be extremely frustrating for you. I understand that. But at the same time, this is something that is going to dictate by law, as Ms. Dickerson just pointed out, what's going to happen over the next 10 years. When you hear "live," what was it? The foreign, "live, work, move, shop, learn, and play," it smacks of an agenda that privileges government interference. If you're familiar with Agenda 21 through the UN, it does the same thing, and I have studied that to a point, not a lot, but I do think that it is in violation of the very tenets of their Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which guarantees us the right to choose how we want to live and play and work, not dictated by some plan. So again, I say, who benefits? Us, the citizens, with more traffic, with more, whatever it is that we're given to do? I don't know. Or is it the developers? Is this another, is it setting itself up to be another issue of the depot that was basically just ripped from us? And it was horrible. That was a horrible thing that happened with that train depot. I loved that train depot, and it was, it was, the whole thing was bad. You know the story, right? So Mayor Jefferson, Pro-Tam Mayor Gillett, all you council members, as you look to decide if you are going to say yes to this plan, is this in the best interest of Anglerwood? I can go on and on about the idea of high-density housing and how really not a good idea that is for our community. When it said that we had chances to talk about this, I was never notified to go. You know me, I would have been there, right? I wasn't there. So is this really, yes, it's been two years. Yes, it's been horrendously difficult, and you want to get it done. I get that. But is this really in our best interest, and is it going to benefit us, the citizens of Anglerwood, the people, us who live here already? Not the people who are going to come in and who are going to bring all this fabulous tax money and all those things, but us folks who already live here? Or is it going to benefit the developers, the land, this, it's, or the urban housing or whoever else is involved in this? Please look at that carefully. Do I like this plan? No, I think you obviously know that. But you guys have to decide because you're deciding for us. We elected you. You're deciding for us. Does that make sense? Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. See if council has any questions for you this evening? Councilmember Berentone?
If you could kind of categorize it, what are the major issues that you have with the comp plan? You mentioned the density, what was-
Yeah, the high-density issue. I live, I live in the very far part of Anglerwood, that little funky part, you know, that's really closer to Littleton, and they have a land use issue with that blighted, you know, that was self-blighted area, and that was high-density. And so I had to study high-density. I'm like, what really is this? High-density, now, I did my doctorate at New York University. I understand high-density from a personal perspective. When you put in something that is high-density, you're putting in high-rise apartments. What I understand with this high-density is that if it's done through the urban renewal or the Housing Authority, that there's a chance that you have the voucher system and that you can have this issue of no tax, and there's no tax base that goes to our schools that is an issue that is addressed supposedly in this comp plan, which, interestingly enough, I don't believe school districts are under the jurisdiction of you local city council members. So there's the issue, as you pointed out, Councilmember Berentone, the schools don't get the tax money if this in fact goes to a voucher system and it goes to a Section 8 type of development, if that's in fact the case. I also know from personal experience, living in New York in a time when the economy was not good, that when the economy goes bad and you have these high-rises and they're not, and they're not occupied, then it becomes a problem. So we look at now when everything's going great, but what happens if? Is that addressed in this plan? Is that addressed in high-density? Is this an issue of, are we going to be able to handle these empty, or these empty houses or putting in more Section 8 folks, as Koween pointed out, that has an issue of bringing in less tax dollars, less educated people, whatever it is that we're supposed to be having with this comp plan? It seems to me to be somewhat logically inconsistent. That's just looking at it from an academically trained person. Does that make sense? So with high-density, you also get more people, more traffic, more crime. Is the tax dollars going to offset all the costs? And you know that's one of my things. Okay, great, we get this tax dollars, but what about the costs? Are the costs going to be, have they been considered with these new folks coming in? And the costs that are going to be involved in the city? Is this, again, is it a good idea? So there you go. So I'm sorry, kind of getting on my soapbox again, but that's what I think about when I think about high-density.
Thank you. Further questions from council?
Not quite the question. I mean, I thought you could categorize if you could just give me, without, I mean, I don't want the dissertation done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got it.
I wasn't expecting that. I appreciate the information, but if you could just give me the list of things that you thought were concerned. You had mentioned high-density, and I wasn't sure if I caught-
Yes, there was high-density. There was this issue of the schools to say, you know, we're supposed to bring in more, you know, highly educated people, but then, you know, we have to address the problem of the Anglerwood school districts, and I said, "That's not something that a city council does. That's a state issue." Or school districts are not under the jurisdiction of this. If I could, I took more notes. Oh, you know, the other thing, too, I do have to say, I asked my neighbors, my very outspoken neighbors, if they would like to come and speak here tonight. Do you know what they told me? No, because we don't get listened to. That's a problem. So is this-
Thank you. If we could just skip to the scope, or stick to the scope of the question.
There you go. So there you go. And that was, you know, so it's like, but that is part of this problem, you know, that's part of my objection to the plan. So I'd have to go through my notes. They're kind of messy. I can certainly send you that in an email, and I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Through the whole council. Okay, good. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Clayton, and on deck is Doug Cohn. Good evening, Mr. Clayton.
My name's Bill Clayton. I live at 958 East Cornell, and I'm not a big fan of the plan. I think it's kind of vague and, just vague. But I do have some particular objections that I just think are not made a high enough priority. And I look at these things, I've looked at what I wrote, and then I realize these are things that have been here for a long, long time. We just keep kicking them down the road, and we don't do anything about them. And I would hope that the comprehensive plan would have as its goal to improve our lives, the lives of the citizens of Anglerwood. I see a lot in here about regional cooperation, and I wonder, if regional cooperation doesn't mean we're, Anglerwood is supposed to take a hit for the team, and in particular, I want to talk a little bit about traffic. I think traffic in our neighborhood divides our city, endangers our lives, makes walking and cycling difficult, adds noise and pollution, reduces our quality of life. But I don't see the comprehensive plan making traffic improvement a goal. It has some vague, small places. It says, "City of Anglerwood will discourage commuter traffic on collector streets," but it doesn't name those streets. We all know which streets those are. They're Downing, Dartmouth, Logan, Oxford. Let's name those streets, and let's take some serious, meaningful action, and let's put that in the plan. US 285 as described as a gateway, that's true. What else is it? It divides the city like a noisy, smelly river. You can't get across there. Imagine if you live on the south side of 285 and you want to go to our business district, how do you get there? Logan is a terribly dangerous intersection. So is Bannock, Cherokee, Downing. We should have something in the comp plan that says, "We want to address this, and we want to try to fix this access." We can't have a vibrant, connected city if you can't get from the south to the north. Excuse me. Just very briefly, a couple of other items. Recreation, we talk about recreation. We see a lot of push to improve recreation along the South Platte River, but no mention of Centennial Lake, which is a wonderful recreational opportunity. We should be allowing canoeing and sailing, more activities on that lake. It's ironic, I'm a whitewater kayaker. I was on a US team in 1967. I've kayaked most of the rivers in America, and it's fine with us if some kid gets an inner tube and goes down and drowns in the river, but we don't want to have safe water recreation at Centennial Lake. I don't understand that. And I have one final issue, and I know I'm running out of time here, and that is-
If you don't mind, Mr. Clayton, you can hold that maybe for a question.
Okay.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Russell?
I would like Mr. Clayton to finish what he wanted to share.
What is the third, yeah?
Yeah, what is the third?
Well, the third one is the quality of our drinking water. It tastes bad, it smells bad, it has strange colors from time to time. Our comprehensive plan, designed to make our lives better, should make this a priority. We should, we need to say in the next 10 years, we're going to fix our water. Everybody I know, I was just talking to Doug Cohn and some other folks, everybody I know has a water filter. And the bottom line for all this, these problems we don't fix. As I've lived in Anglerwood a long time, the result is, I watch my friends and my neighbors move. They go to Highlands Ranch, they go to Parker. These are quality citizens that we would benefit from having as neighbors. But if we don't fix these quality-of-life issues, traffic, water, recreation, you know, who's going to live here? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further questions from council? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening, Mr. Clayton. Next speaker is Doug Cohn, and on deck is Kathleen Bailey.
Good evening again.
Would you mind swearing in first?
Oh, excuse me. I do. Here. Doug Cohn, 3051 South Marion Street, 80113. Of all the talking that we did with the Historic Society and you guys and the comprehensive plan, the phrase Historic Preservation Commission does not appear in the plan. And I don't know if that, that three-word phrase needs to appear in the plan. There's talk about, thinking about some, looking at the old historic documents, or the, the regulation from 2006. I guess what I'm saying is, I would like to see that three-word phrase in the comprehensive plan so that there's no confusion as you guys go forward and, and, and consider putting the commission together. Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if council has any questions for you, sir? Councilmember Berentine?
Are there any particular places that you think it would be appropriate for that three-word phrase to be?
Um, Mr. Stett, when he was doing his thing, uh, one of his slides was, "Realize 5.5." And that's, I, I...
You went away from the mic. Realize what?
I'm sorry. Realize, in the realize part of the plan, 5.5, it talked about, uh, consider, um, doing something with the existing Historic Preservation Ordinance. Um, it'd be real nice to say, "Let's have the Historic Preservation Commission consider what to do with the Preservation Ordinance." So, realize 5.5.
Thank you. Further questions for Mr. Cohn? Seeing none, I'll thank you for speaking this evening, testifying this evening. Our next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, and on deck is CJ Cullinan. Thank you.
I do. Thank you. Kathleen Bailey, 4686 South Jason Street. This plan is all-encompassing, and it's a little bit more familiar if someone was breaking ground somewhere and actually designing a development, a desired development. I am a little bit concerned because a constant theme throughout this, and this, these are quotes, "Inglewood's average smaller homes and lower-than-average income are deterrents to this plan's goal." And throughout the plan, you continue to identify the average Inglewood citizen and the average Inglewood home as a deterrent. And I, I happen to have always appreciated our modest city, and I don't know exactly what that means if you aren't valuing, and I've brought this before, before you guys, before, often don't seem to value what you already have. So, the goal is to get out, you know, remove or reduce the quantity of smaller homes. In fact, it even said, the plan said, that they believe that the smaller homes were the reason for the, the recent, or relatively recent, loss of, uh, number of citizens from 31,000, or whatever it is, down to 30. But rather than considering what the gentleman before just said, the traffic, the water, um, other issues that have always been part of Inglewood, eminent domain was not used. I kept, because of all this criticism for what exists, I kept fright, being concerned I might see the word eminent domain, it doesn't exist, but there do seem to be some pressures being placed on existing homeowners who don't quite meet, who are less than the average homeowner size, um, and what that's going to feel like to them, and, and what that's going to mean to those who still already exist here. And my other concern is the, and again, I, I simply have a degree in economics. I'm not a, don't have a doctorate in anything. I also have a teaching certificate. But it seems to be somewhat backwards, and it's, in your, you are spending the money first, and I will reread it to make sure I could be very much understanding, that the guaranteed beneficiaries of this are initially, and possibly only, the developers. And the primary emphasis is developing, uh, housing, condos, apartments, and high-density. That is a concern only in that currently, our budget is such to maintain and upgrade the existing, um, infrastructure and services with, for what we have now, is not easy. We do not, we don't have a lot of extra money. So, if we're going in first...
Ms. Bailey, if I could get you to conclude your comments.
Sure. Uh, it's pretty much that. If you're, if we're going in first and putting more demand on these first, at what point are you anticipating that the, uh, economic income sources, the businesses, will be there to support what you are doing? It's not an if-you-build-it-they-will-come scenario.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our final speaker is CJ Cullinan.
It's like Culligan Man, except Cullinan.
Good evening.
CJ, sorry. CJ Cullinan, 1501 East Dartmouth Avenue, Arapahoe Acres in Inglewood. I wanted to recognize the plan and thank you again for considering the idea of the historic comp. As a secretary of the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, we are excited that I have been just recently with this group, and I am truly honored by the amount of information that they have in their head, plus the idea of some of the items that we have, and unfortunately have misplaced, but am working to pull all that stuff together with some of the, um, area that we have been granted here in the civic center. And so, I really want to say thank you to anyone and everyone that's been involved in us moving forward on that. When it comes to the comp plan, certain things that do concern me too is this increased diverse, um, density of building. Um, I, I do believe there are people that do like our smaller, I like the term modest homes. I do believe there's ways that we can work with the homes to honor the historic aspect of them, that has created these craftsmen, craftsmen homes, and these different things that I think sometimes we just look at as, "Oh, they're so teeny," or this, that. They can be adjusted, they can be changed to accommodate more, maybe another child moving back for economic reasons, maybe for aging parents taking in their families, but that idea of still honoring the facade. Arapahoe Acres, where I live, is a landmark historic district. It is not protected at all. We have already lost six homes. One of them recently made quite a big quantity of money, made hundreds of thousands of dollars in taking one of our homes and honoring 12 feet of the front facade. We had nothing to do to protect it. I'm begging and pleading that there is consideration in the comp plan for what we do have, whether it be done in planning, zoning, remodeling, the building rules and regulations. The idea that Arapahoe Acres has such a strong national and international renowned, um, what do you call that, reputation? It, it's, it's interesting to me that I can go somewhere and someone says, "Oh, Arapahoe Acres, what's that?" And I'm just like, "Oh, my gosh." Well, let me go ahead and show you, to where I want to make sure that you guys know that you'll be receiving an invitation to come out and see a few of our homes, um, and see how some of these things can be honored, as well as modernized. And I can see that in other aspects of Inglewood that doesn't have that fight, that doesn't have maybe some of that educational, um, coalition that pulls people together and talk about that history. And that's what I'm hoping this commission, as well as our Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, can help with this comprehensive plan specifying that you do honor what we do have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for coming and testifying this evening. Um, at this time, council, I'd entertain a motion to close the, um, public hearing.
We'll move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion prior to closing? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. Records show seven ayes.
At this time, before we move on to Agenda Item 11, I'd suggest we take a five-minute recess. So, re-adjourn here in five.
I, I was sitting here today. Should I run, or should I not?
Terrifying. You know, they said the same thing about me when I came up. And probably about me when you came up, but you know, we, we tried, did not, go. We had, we had some strong thinking and strong laws. You know, I, yes, we, we, you know, Rod and I were driving through the city, and from the time that I've been on council, what is here in the city since I've been here? I can't, this one, this patient will be there, you know, this, we don't know. I want to leave something.
It gets postponed. Yeah. If it has to do with something, maybe they can counteract it. He knows when I'm going to show it. If he lets that happen, he let it happen, you know he has a, then it'll catch. You don't, it bounced. It bounced. Really? I did. I was with the one, for the last one. I didn't cash it till I went, because I'm like, if I don't go, I don't want to have to get the money back. Hey, another one. I'm going to cash it right away, see if it bounces. Well, it cost me, it charged me a fee for it bouncing too. Whoever served me? Talk to Ashley again? I need to talk to her. Just text it to me.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see if it's under my scent. that account was set up? I'm thinking the same thing. So, he sent it, Dugan sent it to Tom Rice. I'm going to find out, because I'm going to make her pay me. This pissed me off. I mean, this says 50 bucks. It's a thought. 50 bucks, 5 million dollars, doesn't matter. You still got to do the right thing. So, yeah, I got it.
Ever kiss?
I'm going to go to the bathroom now. I don't want to go in there. I'll, I'll be right there.
It's just safe. I can see.
Something, no, they all meet together. Decide if they're sick.
I think that is so funny. That is the funniest thing I heard all day. He called me down, and he told me that Tony had something funny. Please, please.
Seems like the accountant's never even set up.
The bunch of people. I'm sorry, this is just...
Yeah, decent start though. Maybe home by midnight yet. Oh, yeah? And he, I didn't know Eric's a good shooter.
To say that, first of all, that we don't listen?
Well, I just wonder, like, you know, I don't know. I get lost.
I told you about my check bouncing, right? That's the check. Yes, that's cool, that's right. Well, that's, the problem is, not just fifty bucks, it's the fee. Oh, nothing else. I need, I need more of a mint than an almond.
I got the mom bag.
Nice. Any candy? Two.
Can I steal one?
Yeah, help yourself.
She was hoping you would ask.
I took a precision shooting course last week. I was the best shot in the group. It was Bristol, Bristol? Bristol Stone? Uh, over Sixth Avenue. Tom and Dennis. You're right, it's Tom and Dennis, we're good.
If I can get everyone to take their seats, we're going to get started here in just a minute.
It is Tom and Dennis. And they're here, just, I'll call them up when they-
We ate them all that night.
I don't know if they were aware that they got pulled from consent or not. Okay.
Nice.
Please take your seats, we'll get started. Moving on to Agenda item eleven. Um, so this is ordinance resolutions and motions under eleven A. We do have a new item that got pulled from consent agenda. That is the new eleven A one, and that is Council Bill forty-seven. Um, to approve a city ditch grant of temporary construction easement and a city ditch crossing agreement with Public Service Company of Colorado. Our staff source is Director of Utilities, Tom Brennan. Uh, sorry, we're getting a little bit out of order, because we got pulled out of consent.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm before you this evening to recommend approval of a city ditch grant of temporary construction easement and a city ditch crossing agreement for Public Service of Colorado for an electrical conduit to provide electrical service to twenty-one hundred West Littleton Boulevard. Inglewood City Ditch right-of-way runs through a portion of this property, which requires a license agreement to cross city ditch. This work will not hinder the ditch operation nor the maintenance activities. And we will realize two benefits. One is an all-weather surface for access. Currently, we do not have that, and weather dictates how we get into this particular section. The other is that all-weather access will be made out of concrete, which will be protecting the pipe. Um, if you have any other questions at this time?
Questions from council? Councilmember Berantine?
The reason I pulled this was because I've been interested in what's been going on with this project over there in Littleton and the disconnect on the area it's going in. And so I was very aware that the Zaccolo had come forward and told, since this is in court, had told everybody that they had already had all of these i's dotted and t's crossed. So, I was somewhat concerned about that, considering that the project is still in court. Um, they're continuing to bill it, build it, and the raucous around this whole thing actually was one of the catalysts in why the Littleton city manager was fired. So, when I saw this come forward and realized, how, how could we be doing some kind of agreement with them, or is that going to cause us any problem in doing an agreement with Zaccolo when this project isn't still in court?
If the pro, if this project does get canceled, these agreements get canceled.
Okay.
It's contingent on the development of it.
All right. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, they're already, I'm sure Zaccolo didn't care that the city manager got fired, but, I mean, I'm not interested in getting involved in that whole mess of what's going on, and knowing that it's still in court, I just wanted to make sure of that. So, thank you very much for making that clear. It's a huge concern for me.
Other questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. Record shows seven i's.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to eleven B one, that's Council Bill thirty-one. Uh, approving this bill for an ordinance establishing the twenty-sixteen mill levy to be collected in twenty-seventeen. Our staff source is Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle. Evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, this is for second reading. I don't have any additional information that I've shared already, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion. So, here's, thank you, second. Um, any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. Record show, five i's and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
Moving on to eleven B two, Council Bill thirty-two. Uh, approving for proposed bill for an ordinance adopting the Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant budget for fiscal year twenty-seventeen. Our staff source, again, is Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle.
Thank you. Again, no additional information available for questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing, uh, Councilmember Russell?
I do have a question about this. Um, and just because of one of the things that's on the agenda tonight to approve um, for a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It, it just boggles my mind that at the beginning, they have a hundred and fifteen thousand, six seventy-four. They take in nineteen, one fifty-five, two forty-two. They spend that exact amount, leaving the same amount. And, you know, when things come up, it, it is amazing to me that it just matches totally.
The reason this one matches, especially for the expenses and the revenue, is that we expend first. We know exactly how much we've spent, and so that's what we bill. And that's why the revenue equals the expenses. We haven't built in any additional to increase any balance at all. There should not be a huge need for balance.
Okay, so, and have we raised water rates? How long has it been since we've raised water rates?
Well, it was before my time. I've been here a whole eight months.
Okay. It probably was longer, a lot longer than that.
I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
Move to approve, Council Bill thirty-two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, five i's and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
Bring us to eleven B three. Council Bill thirty-three, approving for the proposed, the proposed bill for an ordinance appropriating funds for the Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant for fiscal year twenty-seventeen. Our staff source, again, is Director Rinkle.
Thank you. This is appropriating for the budget we just discussed, and open for questions.
Questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion. Oh, question from Councilmember Berantine? No question, no problem.
Well, I'm voting no on both of these. Um, I really do hope that as the joint, um, meeting with Littleton, that we start to get a lot more information on this budget, on the expenditures. There was a request for a line item budget. I, I think that's appropriate going forward. I think we need a lot more information on what's going on with this process and with the finances.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, seeing none, we'll move on, or entertain a motion on this? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record show, five i's and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
Moving on to eleven B four, Council Bill thirty-four. The proposed bill for an ordinance adopting the twenty-seventeen budget. Our staff source, again, is Director Rinkle.
Again, this is second reading on these. I don't have any additional information, and, but here for questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing none, and, oh, Councilmember Berantine?
Again, the, I realize you don't have any additional information, but this is exactly the same sheet of paper that shows that we have resources of ninety-one thousand, or million, sorry, and that we have a use of funds of ninety-eight million. That's a deficit of seven million, and I can't support a deficit budget. The information given in the past, um, since we've gone through first reading and second reading twice, and I've gotten your explanation for it, and unfortunately, it's, it's still lacking. In order for me to go ahead and approve this, when you have things that are both savings and spending and encumbered and not encumbered, um, that's, it still ends up with a seven million dollar deficit. And given the, um, warning over and over again that we are headed for a huge financial cliff that we just seem to be accelerating to, and not, not making plans to go ahead and divert away from that cliff, that we're just kind of headed for it, and I think this is irresponsible.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell, do you have questions? This is the question period. If you have comments, please save those for the comment period.
Okay.
Um, entertain a motion on Council Bill thirty-four? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, further comments on Council Bill thirty-four? Uh, Councilmember Russell?
Um, actually, I just wanted to reiterate, um, what Councilmember Berantine just shared about the fact that council has been told, and city departments have been told, we are heading towards a financial cliff in twenty-nineteen, and the fact that we are not dealing with this sooner than twenty-nineteen is very troubling to me. So, I will be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
All of the comments that I made inappropriately under the question period are now moved to this section for the comment period. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, ma'am. Any further, seeing no further comments, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, five i's and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
Moving on to eleven B five, Council Bill thirty-five. Uh, the proposed bill for an ordinance appropriating funds for twenty-seventeen. Uh, our staff source is Director Rinkle.
Yes, this is appropriating the budget we just spoke of in thirty-four. I have no additional information, but available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Berantine?
Um, again, as I stated before, I don't appropriate money for budgets that I don't approve of when we're overspending by seven million dollars. So, since they go hand in hand, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Um, you know, just a real brief comments from me. I, I am supportive of, of the budgets as proposed. Um, you know, I do see this as a surplus budget in the general fund, and the additional spending through some of our other funds are sustainable and planned for those particular expenditures in this year. I do generally agree with Councilmember Berantine and Councilmember Russell's comments that we do need to take a little bit deeper look at, at what we're doing. I think twenty-seventeen is going to be vital for that. Um, you know, I know that we're going to be beginning some conversations regarding budgeting and taking a look at some of what, um, has come about as a result of our new priority-based budgeting for council to be able to, um, talk about, discuss, and, and make some decisions on. Um, so again, I'll be supportive this evening. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record show, five i's and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
We'll move on to eleven B six. This was Council Bill forty-five that was pulled from the consent agenda. This is a proposed bill for an ordinance, a memorandum of understanding with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Enviro, Environment, Environmental Leadership Program. Our staff source is wastewater treatment plant director, Dennis Stowe. Good evening.
Oh, really? It's Jim Talent, Treatment Division Manager. That's what the agenda says.
You know, it said that on the paper, but we accept anybody willing to step forward and answer our questions. So, thank you, sir, for stepping forward.
Volunteers.
I know, I waited for a moment. Nobody else stepped forward, so thank you again. Questions from council? Um, seeing none, entertain a motion? Oh, wait, question? Councilmember Berantine?
Um, the reason that I pulled it from the consent agenda was I had an opportunity to go over, um-
We're in the question period.
No, I, I do.
Okay, just checking.
I had, no, I appreciate that, but, um, I had an opportunity to go over this document, knowing that the answer to my question last time was that this had not been discussed with Littleton. That, um, and that there was kind of a, maybe some policy procedures that were being done in here that might concern them on, on, on doing this process. Is there an intent to go ahead and do that in the future so that our partner in this wastewater treatment plant is included in what could be considered a policy decisions or policy guidance?
Okay, as far as Littleton's involvement, that's all done through the supervisory committee. Where we are making award recommendations, or applications, or results of those applications, that information is shared with both councils there. Um, things in particular like our environmental management system, that's something that's budgeted and approved every, um, year as far as audits are concerned for that expenditure. So, they're well aware of that program, yes.
Okay, that's a different answer than what I was told last time, so, um, my concern is, is that it's, it dictates some policy here. So, maybe we can talk about that at the joint meeting, then and ask that question.
We could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion on this?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember Berantine?
Uh, for the reasons, uh, the questions that I brought up, I will be voting no on it. And the reason for that is that I do think, while it's stated in here that there is no financial impact in looking over this, um, I do think there's a financial impact to it. Um, and that I think there's some dictate to our process, our procedures, our policies that we end up taking on, and I would like to explore that more. And I don't think I have enough information.
Okay, you can do that. As far as the, um, leadership program that's conducted by the state, there is no direct cost for that program. Um, I can understand where you can see where there are costs in the operation that move toward that, and that is because that's basically a part of our business practice.
Right. And that, and that there is some- I mean, it's pretty clear in here that you're taking on some, some, um, directives, some attitude on policy, and how you want to run the plant that I think does affect, um, some decision-making. And I would like to have that explored more than the way that this addresses it. So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, we can, we can have that arranged at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I do have some of the same concerns, and, um, I, I'm going to be voting no also. Um, my concern last time was that council was not given, uh, information prior to, um, applying. And so, um, I would just like more information ahead of time, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments from council? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record show, five i's and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to 11C1, the Inglewood Water and Sewer Board recommends council approve by motion a risk assessment for Allen Water Filtration Treatment Plant alum residuals in the amount of $111,675. Our staff source is Utilities Director Tom Brennan. Good evening, Mr. Brennan.
Good evening. I have a PowerPoint this evening. Good evening. I'm here to recommend approval by motion to proposal from Integral Consulting for the risk assessment for the Allen Water Filter Treatment Plant water treatment residuals and T-norm management. At council's request, this proposal was developed to address raised concerns about the possible health risks to workers and adjacent neighbors from exposure to T-norms present in the treatment residuals. More particular, we are going to be performing a human health risk assessment. We're going to analyze the Allen Filter Plant water treatment procedures. That analysis will help with the input in equations for the risk assessment. We're going to have alternative management, alternative processes evaluated with a risk assessment associated with them, and finally, a final report and a presentation to council and the public. The RFP was advertised September 1st, 2016. Proposals will due September 22nd. Staff evaluated and recommended. Award on the 28th. It was recommended by Water and Sewer Board for approval to council at the November 8th meeting. We received three proposals. Based on the selection criteria, Integral was recommended. Integral offers independent, fresh set of eyes with an impeccable credentials to their staff for this evaluation. This proposal brings together a team of scientists and engineers from Integral Consulting, Duberry Engineering, and Two Lines Incorporated to provide experience in performing risk assessments, evaluating radionuclides, health effects, and design and evaluation of water treatment process and residuals handling and disposal. Staff believes Integral's team approach is the most effective way to accomplish the objectives of this work as it covers multidisciplinary knowledge and expertise to complete a comprehensive evaluation. The scope of work was broken into four tasks. Task one is the risk assessment. The risk assessment will be performed using those reconstruction from historical data. It will consist of a human risk, human health risk assessment for workers, nearby residents, using the RESRAD model. It will also assess exposure to multiple exposure routes such as ingestion, skin contact, and dust inhalation. Task two will evaluate the residuals' management practices, our current practices, to establish the correct input into the model. That'll consist of the overview of the plant's current processes, compliance with relevant rules, regulations, and best management practices, and assessment of the current risk and future exposure to radiation based on the current residuals' management program. Task three, rough order of magnitude for residuals' management alternative. Rough order of magnitude is an industry standard term referring to an educated guess or an unrefined estimate of potential cost. It will also evaluate the cost of any pre-treatment alternatives and potential modifications to the current processes at the plant. Task four will be the final presentation. It'll summarize the results of task one through three. The final report will build on this analysis to construct and convey a complete understanding of the potential of human health risks, and it'll be presented in person at a council meeting to be determined. Staff recommends award of RFP 16-020 to Integral Consulting and its teammates in the amount of $111,675. The project funding will come from our professional services budget. As an industry that is heavily regulated and process-driven, in our professional services fund, we have a contingency fund that we utilize for times like this for regulatory and operational issues that arise requiring outside consulting. This work will be completed within six months from the notice to proceed. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Questions from council? I have a question regarding the, I think it was the first task of the risk assessment and, you know, whether or not the missing 2010 report is of substantial impact to that analysis.
We have the data from that report. We do not have the actual ACZ report. That report, that information is summarized in the letter to the state.
So, we have a letter from us to the state summarizing the findings of the report?
From CDM Smith to the state, yes.
From CDM Smith, okay. Other questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
I'm moved to approve 11C1.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion? Go ahead. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, it makes me very sad that we're at this point. I went back and watched the August 15th council meeting and the discussion that ensued there, and I don't believe, I believe this is a waste of money to do this because this is not what the citizens asked for, and I do not believe it is what council asked for. I believe that Councilmember Olson asked for an independent investigation of the management practices, and I, the thing that makes me incredibly sad is there is this trust issue, and we are spending money that is not going to fix that trust issue. And I'm not exactly certain how to do it, but this is a huge waste of money. And I feel like the whole discussion got turned around that night when things were asked for. I do believe some of the council members were asking for this assessment done. But if we have the data, we don't need to spend $111,000. I mean, I'm assuming that you already have in place these RESRAD studies. Is that correct? I mean, we still do RESRAD studies without adding this one onto it.
We performed one in 2007 for the Allen Plant as well as the golf course. In the past, the RESRAD has been done for the landfills.
Okay. So, if we're not putting it in a landfill, then the RESRAD does not get done? Okay. So, it can be, it can be sitting in our parking lot, and we don't have to do a RESRAD. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay. Which, then that becomes problematic for the employees, but I will not be voting for this. I'm incredibly sad that we're at this point because it's not going to fix the problem that we had to begin with, and that is the trust issue.
Yes. I fully understand that. As you know, I took over as director last July. Currently, we are on, back on track with our residuals' management plan. All the residuals generated in '16 will be hauled off the first quarter of '17. There will be no residuals on-site till the next year's production, and we will, that will continue from now forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
Because Councilmember Russell was so upset, she called me and made me listen to the meeting again, and I did, and I have to agree with her that the consensus at council at that August 15th meeting was to have an investigation from an independent expert. And as this was initiated by Councilmember Olson, who of course said, you know, she supports whistleblowers that we needed to offload this from the staff, that we needed to go ahead and take, as Mayor, City Manager Keck said, that the state violation was that we didn't remove the residuals. That's exactly what Ms. Bailey has brought up again, that we didn't remove them as we should per our management plan, that we were wrong, and that we, the intent was not to continue this, but to, and I liked Councilmember Olson's word, to offload it from the staff and have this handled by an expert. And at that August 15th meeting, it was an investigation that we were looking for into what happened because what these people keep showing up for is that they believe that during a period of time when those residuals were kept on property, and we've already established that there was a cost to it, and there was a decision made to keep it, and then we stockpiled it for that period of time. And during that period of time, it is believed by the community that there was a higher rate and that it is the cause during that period of time of people contracting cancer. And in order to go ahead and allay their fears and their concerns, they have asked for certain material to be given to them, and we are short the most important, apparently, year and the one year that we don't have documentation for it. So, there's a trust issue and a concern, but this all came from people in the community believing that our stockpiling of this, which we did, which was against our management process, which we shouldn't have done, caused people in the community and in that plant, our employees, cancer. And that's the, what I believed we were going to do to move forward to try and either allay their fears or figure out what we, whether we contributed to it or not. I don't think that this is going to solve that problem. I don't think it's addressing what the original issue is, and I think that's part of why we see them continue to come every two weeks because we're not addressing that issue. And so, I do agree with Councilmember Russell. I don't think we did what we said we wanted to do, what this council directed on August 15th. And if any other council members would like to save yourself an hour and 40 minutes trying to get to it, it's at about 100, it's at about an hour and 40 minutes if you want to go back and renew your recollection of it, but I don't think we're doing what council wanted at the time, what they asked for, and I don't think this is going to solve the problem, and it's a lot of money to not solve the problem.
Yes. That missing report is also a concern of ours. As you know, that is the only document in the files that was turned up missing. The Allen Plant is a locked facility with 15 employees. I'm not justifying, but I'm just explaining. Records were not locked. Offices were not locked.
I understand, but as you've just, you have just put really, you've put really well the words of why they're concerned. It is the only report that is missing, and you have people in this community that believe that that is the report that would prove that we contributed to giving our employees cancer, and it's the only report that's missing. I share their concern, as obviously you do too.
Thank you.
I just don't think what we're doing is going to help so for this particular piece of it. I don't think either from the meeting that started this whole process on August 15th that this was what council wanted. I don't think it's going to help answer the problem, and it's a lot of money to not fix the problem.
Yes. You know, along with the health risk assessment, we're also going to get a evaluation of the entire treatment process, which for me, I will find very beneficial to use as a baseline moving forward with all treatment processes. As you read in their proposal, all these steps are necessary for the proper input into the model.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Gillett?
Tom, thank you so much. Actually, I have a different opinion. Yes, we did speak on August 15th about an issue, but we have spoken numerous times since then, and Mr. Keck has also addressed this council on not only finding out what happened, but how to prevent things in the future, how to set a plan forward to ensure our citizens that if we were having a process that may not have had the most beneficial aspect or outcome that we wanted, that we would find others. That was part of our RFP process. This is no secret. All of a sudden, we're finding this out. We've had numerous discussions about this, including getting an RFP that's been, we actually asked for community input on the RFP, and the community decided not to give us any input by their own, you know, right? They didn't have to. But I'm thankful that we're going through this process. I want to know if we've done anything wrong. I want to know if we're doing anything wrong now. I want to know if we can do anything better in the future. And I believe this process, this RFP, helps us to analyze and move forward with confidence that we can tell the community we have had an outside agency look, and here's the best way to move forward from here forward. Also, the Water Board approved this unanimously. They've looked at this, and they said this is the best move for our city to move forward. We didn't have any of the community there when this was discussed, so we just, the Water Board figured it was the best, and I supported that as well, as I know the mayor may have been there, I know Steve may have been as well, and it's also, we have transcripts of that, but it's something I think we need to move forward on. I think the citizens demand that we not just do the right thing, but as a group say, this is what we want our city to know and move forward on and continue to look for. My question is, you know, in 20 years, if we still can't find that report, are we still going to have the same people here? If the report isn't available, we need to have a, you know, somebody tell us it is not going to be available. We'll never get it so that they don't think, so the community doesn't think we're trying to hide some. I don't think we are. I'm dismayed that that individual item is missing, but again, we have, none of us here can say that that report shows or proves someone got cancer or not. It would prove a reading or prove a report, what I think would be important, but for any of us up here to say that a single report would prove that, you know, that cancer, none of us here are scientists or doctors. So, I want to make sure that the community knows we're trying to do the best thing. We're trying to find out the facts, but yet we're trying to be proactive in the future, and I appreciate Mr. Keck wanting to make sure that, you know, we looked at alternate sources for make sure if we have to change our process, then that's what we need to do, and we have an outside agency to help us do that, and this is what we're approving tonight. So, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Well, Councilmember Gillett really said everything I wanted to say, so I'll just say affirm that, and this is exactly what I think we need to be doing. I don't think some people are ever going to trust on this one, and perhaps it's, you know, it's unfortunate, but I wanted to ask one question, though. In terms of the historic data, the reconstruction, are you hopeful, I mean, I would expect that if they did this reconstruction that they would be independent enough to say you made mistakes along the way, and that's what number two and three then would also begin to follow up. Is that what the intent is of this? That's how I read it?
Yes.
Right. So, I don't get this whole thing on trust. I mean, I don't, I think trust is something that has been broken, and it's very hard to rebuild trust after it's been broken. And so, this to me is the best next step of what we And so this, to me, is the best next step of what we need to do, along with, it'd be great if we could find that one report, but you have a summary of it, right? But we don't have the actual report. So hopefully they can look at that and give us advice and tell us, you know, where did we mess up if we did, and what can we do differently and take ownership for what needs to be taken ownership of. I thank you for putting this together.
I have complete confidence in our current process, but I do think there is some value. We've been doing this process since 1988. There is some value to look and see what else is out there. And that's one of the things that will be produced with this study.
Thank you. And in my mind, for people's health, the, the funding for this is a small amount, given what risks, alleged, alleged risk is out, out there for so many people that people are fearing. And so to me, this is a small, small amount to pay to try and figure out, is that risk real? Is it, you know, what, what is it? So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I have some, I also have some comments. You know, I thought the, the scope of the work was logical and it made a lot of sense and advanced the ball for us as far as answering some of the questions that we asked. You know, getting back, I guess, to the, you know, trust issue, if you will, I, I do think it might be prudent hearing that the scope of work won't be completed for six months to approve this at our next meeting and gather additional public feedback on the scope of work, just to try to alleviate some of that and have an open discussion about, you know, because this is a lot of money we're spending here, and making sure that we're getting as much as we can, if there are some other items that can be added or, or the scope improved upon. I, I think I would like to take that opportunity to do that. You know, as far as the, you know, cause of the cancers and things, Mr. Robinson, I don't know if you know, maybe this is more prudent for our council request, but I know that we have looked to outside agencies for, I believe the term was clusters, that, you know, who did we go to? Do you recall or no, off the cuff, sorry to put you on the spot there, regarding what type of research we did or who we looked to, looking for other potential environmental causes?
Sure, sir, I can definitely look into that for you, but to my knowledge, I believe that the, our SIRS attorneys went to the Rappahoe County Department of Health for those clusters.
Thank you. But again, I'll, I'll offer that for council as an alternative to approving or disproving this tonight, to delay this for two weeks to gather additional feedback, reconsider the scope of work, and then approve it. Again, I, I, you know, if I had to choose between approving and not approving tonight, I would probably choose to approve, but again, I, I think it'd be more prudent, given the amount of money and given the feedback we've already received from the public, to delay this for two weeks. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for bringing this forward. To Councilmember Olson's point, I think about the, about the funds, I think it's, it's reasonable considering the amount of potential health risks that are on the table. I think $100,000 is, is well worth investigating that. And I appreciate what you said earlier about always looking to improve, and just because we've done things this way for a long time, doesn't mean there are better ways to do it. And I think if, if this can help us identify potential holes or ways to better document things or safely and secure documents, I think that would, that would be helpful. My question is, related to the timeline, six months is kind of the estimate. Will we have updates along the way as the, the work progresses, or will we just hear when it's completed?
Yes, I can make updates available to council as we go through. We will have monthly meetings.
Thank you.
And they, I can have those available, or I will make them available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
Well, I appreciate Mayor, your desire to get more citizen input into this. It, it sounds like nobody wants us to even do this, so I don't know what more would be, would be helpful at this point. So, and people have denied wanting to be a part of this process all along, they just wanted the, the one report we're missing. So I, I would say let's move forward, move forward. We have a contractor, we have a great organization that can do it, let's move forward and get it done.
Thank you, Councilmember Berantine.
I would disagree with Councilmember Olson in that they haven't denied wanting to be part of this process, they have been the process. They haven't agreed with how we wanted to do it. They come every week, and they are very much a part of this process. They are the reason that we're still talking about this. So they are the process. So I think that's, I, I think that's kind of just a little bit unfair in that I think they've been very clear on exactly what it was they did want. And through this process, they asked for certain documentation, and it was through that request that we even found out that we were missing stuff. I mean, if they hadn't requested it, we probably, this council would probably never even know that it was missing, or that there was maybe some opportunity for some other process to handle it. Then it was through that process, through their involvement, their research, that we found out that it was on a hard drive somewhere, being chopped up or tried to get out of. It was through their research and their process that we found out that there are other companies that we deal with that hold this information for three or five or 10 years, and the information's all different from different people. So they've been very engaged, they are this process, and since they are the process, and they say, no, I don't want to participate in a public meeting, in a town hall where I think you're just going to cover it up and do what, as Bailey said, was a dog and pony show, that was, that was well taken. If that wasn't going to fit what they wanted for the process, for the concern, because they brought it. This council didn't bring this concern to the public, it came the other way around. And I agree, if, I really thought that this was going to answer the question of whether we have processes and procedures in place in the past that didn't contribute to people contracting cancer, then that would be helpful. You're saying that there are some pieces of this that may be of some value, but I'm not sure that the entire $100,000 needs to be spent because it's not going to answer those questions. If we wanted to do an assessment on the operation and processes and procedures going forward, then that's one thing, but that's not how this is being touted. It's being touted as an answer to the concerns that the community has been bringing to us for going on 10 months now. And so as we continue to find out whether the report's going to be taken out of the computer or not, and that's still a possibility, that she may have, and has been extremely clear, that they want instead and demand that the Inglewood Management provide the 210, 2010 sledge report to our group so that a resrad onsite worker risk assessment for 2009, 2010, and 2011 sledge can finally be completed. They have been very clear on what they, what they wanted. So if we separately, or the Water and Sewer Board separately wants to go ahead and evaluate your operations and your procedures moving forward, I'm not saying that that's, might not have some value, but this is being put out there as if this is going to resolve that issue, and they've made it very clear that it won't. She's made it very clear, that group has made it very clear what they want.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates.
The assessment of the processes has to be completed in order to put the input into the model. They have to know our process.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates.
I'll keep it simple here. I would say that I agree with the concept that we're moving forward and creating this report. The issue of the water department isn't just the allegations, it's about trying to plan for the future, make sure we're doing the best processes. And if it's been the 80s since the last time that, that was looked at, technology's changed. So in this situation, we're going to be able to deliver as much possible information as we can, not just in one area, but across the board. And I think that's a prudent thing for us to be doing. So I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
Truly, I was misunderstood and perhaps misspoke, Ms. Berantine, but I did not for a minute want to communicate that the people who've been coming haven't been part of the process. This is a process that's been wonderfully led by them in bringing it up, no question. What I'm saying is that this particular assessment tonight that's before us is not something that they want, and they've made it really clear tonight, too, is they don't, they don't really want this done, it's a waste of money. You've said that, Ms. Russell has said that. So I'm saying that it doesn't really make sense to delay it another couple of weeks because regardless what we do with this particular assessment, I doubt that it will be useful to them. It won't build trust, it won't necessarily, it will, it will not resurrect the, the missing document. We have to do both. I believe we have to, to do this, and I think we should be flying someone down to Arizona to get at that computer, but I know it's probably confidential, and they have other stuff on that computer, so they probably won't give us access to it. What I'm saying tonight, I hope, does that make better sense to you, that that's what I meant, Ms. Berantine, counselor? That I, I didn't mean that these people were not in a process of it, they've been a part of it the whole time. This is one response to help get the background information. No, you won't give that to me. I'm trying to miss, I'm trying to clear up a misunderstanding. I want to be heard.
I'm listening to your clarification.
But, okay, great. Anyway, I think we should go forward, I'd like to call for the question.
Thank you. Who's the moving party? I just have one final comment, then we can get to the vote, if that's okay.
I'm the moving party, I'll also call.
Fair enough. Again, I, I will support, but I do think this is logical for the neighbors, the employees, the customers of the city of Inglewood to do this. You know, as far as the trust issue and what some of the group would like to see forward, I would still invite them to make those comments and see if we can't improve the scope moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, point of order about that. If we do decide to change the scope of work, we will have to go back in the RFP process and let the all folks who submitted an RFP rebid, and then go on the new scope of work at that point.
Thank you, understood. And, you know, it, it may be a, a different RFP, you know, perhaps modification is a poor choice of words, but we can look at what the requests are and, and see what we can go from there. The question has been called, no further comments, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Records show five ayes and two nays, and two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berantine.
Excellent, moving on to general discussion, councilmember's choice. Would anybody like to kick us off this evening? Mayor Proton, would you mind kicking us off?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson?
Nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Berantine?
I attended the meeting done by the developer, Metropolitan Homes, and was really brought to light some of the disconnect that we might be having in using the comp plan with the higher density going on, because you're getting some pushback. We don't, we seem to be disconnected with what the community wants. One of the things that we had brought up before, Mayor, was about having another viewpoint of this, was bringing in somebody like Evan Fedor with Better Not Bigger, maybe Randall O'Toole, who I had seen at a presentation, who had been, I think with Heritage, and had been a Yale professor, and had delved into this subject pretty well, to kind of get a different perspective on some of the issues going on with high density. And there was an opportunity for us to maybe pony up with the city of Littleton to bring in a speaker and do some kind of joint meeting, and I haven't heard anything more on that. So if we could kind of look at where that's at, because I brought it up a couple of meetings ago, and I believe the city manager was going to be looking at, talking to Mark Ralph, the interim city manager for Littleton, on whether we were going to do something with that.
Yeah, and remind me again, what issue specifically? Is it prior to the comp plan? Are you relating to the comp?
Obviously, yeah, I would like it to be, I would like to get a different perspective before we go, you know, I'd like to be the angel that fears to tread, a little before we go doing things that are, we're, we're already seeing some, some problems with, and at least see if we could get some of that addressed.
Do you know who Littleton is having and when?
No, it was my understanding that city manager Keck was going to discuss this with Mark Ralph and, and find out what they were doing.
I haven't heard anything. I, I haven't heard anything. I suppose I would open this up to council, if this is something we would like to explore. You know, I haven't heard anything from Eric, I, I doubt Mr. Mer, Mr. Robinson has any news, any information on that.
Then I'd like to wait until Eric, I mean, I'd like to give him an opportunity if he has spoken to him, but I just want to put it out there that I'm asking again about it, and what the conversations happened or not.
If you remind Mr. Keck, maybe we can do that under manager's choice next week.
Sir.
And then the sewer plant, the joint wastewater treatment plant meeting before the end of the year, that was my understanding, we were going to get that going so that we can get some of these questions answered going into the new year. In looking back on some of the previous meetings, I mean, it was somewhat disheartening to see that the exact same process, the exact same timeline, the meetings were held at the same time last year as they were this year, as far as doing budget workshops, as far as discussing the budget, and we are just continually kicking the can down the road. And so when I'm listening to the mayor-manager meeting, we're already having some issues. We're into February here, and I don't hear anything coming up about, we're discussing budget, that we're going to start as soon as possible addressing these issues, that everybody keeps saying is so serious, but we keep just not discussing. So if we could make sure that that gets put on the mayor-manager agenda sites on what we're doing, because when I listen to that meeting, and all of a sudden it's, we're doing stuff for February, and I'm like, still haven't heard anything about talking about a budget. So if we could kind of put a little focus on that with all of these issues going on, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, as far as a, a 2017 budget discussion, is that where you're?
Right.
Yep. I thought we had scheduled one for January, February, but I'll have to double check on that date and get back with you.
If I missed that, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Sometimes it's a little hard to hear, so if I did, I'd appreciate that. Great job on them getting the mid-block crossing done. I illegally did that with a couple of people, we went across.
We won't tell anybody.
We went past the, the thing, because tons of people are. It took them four days, they poured the concrete, they did a beautiful job, and I would like to get an update on what's going on with XL, which is, we were told that that mid-block crossing wouldn't be opened up like legit, you know, legally, until XL did their piece. And I'd like to get an update on what's going on with that. It looks really nice, they did a beautiful job. It was done quickly, it was done with a minimum amount of aggravation, so all of the businesses down there seem to be happy that that's moving forward. And we're, we're going to address the process for the east side of the Paseo and the, what's going to be done with Public Works for the parking lot and the lighting on that east side for that 150 spots back there. Safety and lighting has been a huge issue on all of this construction and with the businesses down there, so want to keep people safe going, and I'd like to get an update when, when we're going to do that piece. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
I would just like to thank everyone for coming tonight, that stuck it out till the end, and even the ones who didn't, and I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And so anyway.
Thank you. Mayor's comments, I do have a couple of things. I would like to chat a little bit about the election results. When are we going to get a certifying the results piece? Excellent, thank you. You know, as folks are aware, still unofficially, I suppose, the general obligation bond for the new police station was passed by the voters. You know, the council will need to move quickly in order to get those bonds to market. We're not the, going to be, you know, the only ones asking for money or who got money approved. So I would like to see us move quickly towards that to make sure that we understand the scope of the project and make sure we nail that down really tightly as quickly as possible, as well as get these bonds to market and make sure we get as good a price as we can on this money. The second thing I have is, of course, election-related as well, it is that recreational marijuana passed, as well as the special tax being proposed, the special tax, I guess I should say. I guess I have a question for Ms. Rinco, I don't know if you're able to answer this, or perhaps, again, maybe something that might be better handled through a council request, but do you know if that money will be separately accounted for, or will, that will just be general fund monies, are you aware? Or maybe that's a policy decision for council? I don't know what your thoughts are there on that. Sorry, should be using the crutch, I, I feel sorry for you. Sorry, should be using the crutch, I feel sorry for you.
Someone would tell me the same thing. The actual wording in the ballot language gave latitude to use it for different things, and I don't believe we've had discussion as council to decide absolutely where we want to put it.
Fair enough.
I'm not expecting a whole lot the first year, I could be surprised, but probably more for the second year.
Yeah, fair enough. They'll still have to get licensed and, and get through that piece, so, you know, our year-end estimate of, I think, half a million or a little over, slightly over half a million is probably ambitious for our first year. Okay, that's all I have for you, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
But I would advocate to council that we consider a separate accounting for marijuana issues. You know, having spoken with jurisdictions who do have recreational marijuana, it does seem to be, I think, a best practice to gather data on how much money revenues are being generated, what the use of those revenues are, so I would advocate, not necessarily for a special fund, but at minimum a, a special line item for recreational marijuana tax revenues. And I suppose we can take that up at a, at a later date, but if, you know, if council's okay with that, I would prefer, or I would like to schedule a study session on that, on that topic, if others might be interested. Seeing a lot of heads nodding, I won't waste our time any further with that. What's that?
We'll be talking about the budget.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll be getting around to that, that's a good point. I also, secondarily, want to let you know, was recently selected to be part of Taiwan's U.S. Young Leaders Program, and recently traveled to Taiwan for an educational and fact-finding trip. Was able to meet with local elected officials there to learn from each other and tour some civic spaces and monuments, museum rail operations, business parks, and some private businesses. Wanted to let council and the public know that no city funds were used and that no solicitation or lobbying took place. You know, although I'm always kind of looking for opportunities for Inglewood, I don't think there's anything to bring forward at this time. You know, as our mayor, you know, I realize I represent our community at all times, and even when no official action is taking place, I think it's helpful for everyone to know and be a resource for all of us, as well as staff generally, city staff generally. So feel free to email me any questions or comments or concerns, or call me anytime to discuss that. Finally, I wanted to highlight that I was at the, Councilmember Yates and I were at the Bird's Sall grand opening last week. It was great to see a new business in Inglewood and an established business in Denver relocating to the city of Inglewood. Really excited to see them coming to Inglewood. That's all I had this evening. I'd like to move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, sir. The only thing I have is, just to kind of answer just a couple of the comments that I heard, in that it was even today that I had a conversation about making sure that we're having more meetings with council and bringing more of the budgetary process to you at an earlier date. Know that that's one of our top priorities and that, but before we do that, we have to kind of get our own house in order in terms of making sure that we're establishing a process that we update you and bring you good information on a constant basis, which hasn't been done before. And so, we are, we are going to be doing that, we are going to be looking forward to bringing you more of the budgetary process, as well as bring you all the PBB items and getting you more involved in the budgetary process ASAP, because that's necessary for us to make changes, as well as looking forward to this, to this so-called cliff that's coming. And so, we want to avoid it. And so, know that that's, that, that is our top priority. Also, happy Thanksgiving.
That's all I have. Thank you, happy Thanksgiving to you as well. City Attorney's Report.
Tonight, someone was talking about the study session next week on the sex offender ordinance.
Yes.
As you all know, we have a hearing December first. It's my understanding that several members have, of this council have been subpoenaed for that hearing. And I am just expressing a concern to this body that if there's a discussion prior to this hearing, I'm concerned about what some of the subpoenaed individuals might say, and if that conversation might be used at the hearing. So I am recommending that that study session topic be moved till after December first. But, again, that is a question for this council, but that's my concern, and it's a concern, you know, any time you have a discussion about something where there is pending litigation, it's always a concern about what might be said, because it could impact the city's case or position.
Thank you. Comments? Let's discuss this, Council, Mayor Protam.
I would support that, I know that we want to do it, but I also know that we need to do it right, so I would prefer protecting each member, and I'm going to support moving ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantyne?
What did we think was going to happen when we said we were going to continue to look at an ordinance knowing that we were in court? That we wouldn't do a moratorium, we weren't taking any steps to go ahead and, and give ourselves any space to prevent going to court? We knew we were in court, and we're still looking at the ordinance. Why, this isn't a surprise. I mean, this is exactly what happens. We knew the December first issue was coming, so we, we do, we do everything and we do nothing at the same time. We don't do anything to prevent it or stop enforcement of it so that we could have some time to discuss it. We force that issue so that we end up in court, and knowing that we have to redo this ordinance, that we have apparently a lot of people on council that have problems with, with what we're doing, at least acknowledge that we have to address something. And I don't think that that makes any difference. This whole thing has been very public on what's going on out there, the comments that have been made and back and forth, the stuff that we need to do to address this issue, I don't think it makes any difference. I think it's just a straw man to just continue to not address this, not do anything, and it's, it makes it sad. So unless the council is willing to go ahead and put a moratorium on this ordinance so that we can give ourselves some space to talk about it, or to wait until the litigation is done, but we can't do both. We can't do everything and nothing all at the same time, it doesn't work that way.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
So would the recommendation then be that we do, that we take them Monday, the 12th, as a study session? That's the next full study session we would have, right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving it to the 12th and keeping, moving on and trying to set a public hearing for whatever we determine we'd like to see happen if any changes are being proposed. I'm hoping we will propose changes and a public hearing be set as soon as possible in January. The time is act, maybe is actually a little bit better because a public hearing would be after the holidays before, so, but I think we need to keep moving. I don't want to delay it any further.
Heard a recommendation of December 12th, that is our study session night where this could be rescheduled. Mayor Protam and I would have to look at some of these topics, it is a full agenda, but we could prioritize this over others. Do others support that?
Could I just ask Dugan a real quick question? Is the issue that's being decided on the first?
It's a preliminary injunction hearing.
So, nothing's going to be decided on the first that will change anything except for that we're still going to court?
Well, if the court decides to enjoin the city from enforcing its ordinance, that would be a decision right there. So, but the court could also deny the request for a preliminary injunction. Those are the two decisions the judge is going to have to make, and whether he makes that decision on the first, I can't answer that.
We may not know by the 12th, but it is certainly possible that we will know the outcome.
But we will still more than likely be in court on the 12th of January, on the 30th of December. The case is still, nothing that's happening on the first is going to stop this case.
That's correct.
But what could stop the case is if this council on the 28th decided they didn't want the ordinance anymore. That would stop the case.
Well, you would need an ordinance to repeal the ordinance, that would take two readings, so it wouldn't get done until probably early January.
So the information that's been provided in open council here, that the judge has made comments that he believes this is a legislative issue, that probably is affecting his decision already, that he knows that we're looking at the ordinance. So I'm not sure that we're changing anything, we're just delaying it again. And so, we're, nothing, to Lindis' point, nothing is going to be any different after this hearing then? I mean, unless we actually did meet on the 28th.
The one thing, the one thing that will be different will at least be the testimony from the councilmembers will have been taken, and that issue will have at least been resolved.
Great thing to do.
You know, I-
That doesn't stop them from subpoenaing councilmembers for the next hearing.
Agreed, agreed, and-
So if the councilmembers being subpoenaed is constantly going to keep pushing, kicking this can down the road, then we end up in no better spot.
You know, I'm sympathetic to, you know, councilmembers who have been subpoenaed, who are concerned about the discussions on November the 28th. I, like Councilmember Barantyne, though, feel like we're continuing just to punt this issue, so I cannot support a delay. You know, that being said, though, December 12th has been suggested. I guess I would like to try to get some consensus on December 2nd, I'm sorry, continuing with the 28th, moving to December 2nd, or continuing to a date uncertain, I suppose would be the three options for this council.
So you would do a regular meeting on the 2nd, huh?
No, I said, the options would be November 28th, where it's scheduled currently, December 12th has been suggested as a study session that it could move to, and then the third option would be to continue it indefinitely, in my mind, and not necessarily pick a date. You know, we would probably have, if that were the option selected, this council would probably have to come to consensus again to reconsider it and schedule it, in my mind. Councilmember Martinez?
I would be in favor of moving the study session date to December 12th.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Gillett, were you in favor of the 12th or indefinite or both?
December 12th.
12th, thank you. I suppose the good thing about the 12th is it wouldn't, it may provide some window of opportunity if there's not another subpoena date afterwards. Other, others want to weigh in on where they're at on this? Loretta, I got you. Councilmember Yates, were you on the 12th or indefinite? I'll come back to you if you want to chew on it.
I'll say that, you know, I'll go with the 12th, but I'm wondering if it's a prudent thing to be having these discussions until the court has made their decision.
Councilmember Olson?
I'm just trying to think.
You're on the 12th, yep, okay. That is consensus to move forward on the 12th. Councilmember Russell, do you have some comments?
I have a question. I mean, what is the purpose of having another study session? No one is coming to speak. Are we having a study session to gain consensus before we come to vote? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's several alternatives that could come about as a result of that study session, and I see no action as a distinct possibility, I see repeal of the ordinance as a possibility, I see a modification of the ordinance as a possibility. I think Mr. Comer's office will be providing some information regarding all three of those alternatives, and council would probably need to give some consensus direction on what to move forward with.
I did give you a memo at the last study session when we did discuss this. If you would like me to, I can-
Re-include it.
Resubmit that memorandum to council.
Please, but I imagine us kind of stepping through that and having a discussion and coming on consensus with one of those to move, to bring forward. You know, you're right, though, I mean, it is not a decision-making meeting, ultimately, you know.
So, I mean, the bottom line is-
We need to consensus to bring something else forward without a study session, it's not-
The bottom line is, I do believe, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, please, go ahead.
The, the bottom line is, we could discuss that at a council meeting and take care of it, because we can't make a decision in a study session, anyway.
Well, and one of the things that I'd like to discuss during the study session is the possibility of a public hearing. You know, I do think it would be prudent to move this towards a public hearing regardless of what the consensus was, to put the public on notice that this is an issue, the council is going to consider and draw as much public comment on the issue as we could before we made a decision. So that the, I forgot to mention that, that public hearing element, while not legally required, I think would be prudent in this case personally, but that's just me. And so that might be something, another topic for discussion in that study session. Councilmember Barantyne?
Well, if we're moving toward a public hearing and notifying the public, then we don't need to have the study session at all, we just need to set the public hearing and notify the public, and if we, if people think that there's more notification that needs to go out, I think what Councilmember Russell is saying is, what would, what in the world would we be discussing at the study session if it's just-
Yeah, and again, what I'm saying is, though, there could be, you know, what we're presenting to the public for their comment on the public hearing could be very different. Again, it could be a repeal, it could be a modification, you know, wherever we feel like the general consensus of council is at that time. So in my mind, I'm trying to get that question answered, in my mind, and I think what most would be to bring it forward to a public hearing.
I think to Councilmember Russell's point, we can't make that decision in study session, anyway. We have to, we should do that at council.
I disagree, I think that's prudent for study session to get consensus on what to bring forward. Other comments? We do have consensus to reschedule this to the 12th. Mayor Protam Gillett, you and I will, at our next mayor-manager meeting, have to bump one of these other items, but we'll make it happen, yeah.
Slap them with the 28th.
Yeah, there you go, whichever one might be able to move forward. We'll figure it out at the mayor-manager meeting. Anything else, Mr. Comer? Thank you, and with-
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone here and everyone listening. We are adjourned.